I'd like to call to order this council meeting, city council meeting of July 2nd, 2024. Before asking the clerk to call roll for tonight's regular meeting, is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Pascal?
It's been moved by Councilmember Falcone, seconded by Councilmember Black, to excuse Councilmember Pascal from tonight's meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Six zero. Oh, I'm gonna have to break that habit tonight. Clerk, will you please call a roll for the meeting?
Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Falcone.
Here.
Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Here.
Mayor Curtis.
Here.
That's me. To begin, I want to note for our audience that as a result of suspicious activity on the city's internal network last week, city staff proactively shut down access to the network out of abundance of caution. Because of this network disruption, the city council meeting is being held in person only. We are going old school. The meeting is not being streamed live and is not available for remote attendance. The meeting is still being recorded and will be posted online at a later date. In addition, before moving to our study session items, unless there is an objection, I will move the executive session on our agenda to begin at 6:30 PM instead of at the end of our regular meeting. We will still expect to reconvene our regular meeting at 7:30. I see no objections. Our study session tonight is on two items. The first item is on the feasibility study for the Waneta Public Pathway. The second item is on the City Flag Process Draft Resolution. City Manager.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Welcome, everybody. So, we are gonna try to keep each of these to half an hour. If the conversation's still going at 6:30, we do have a fairly short business agenda, so we'll just roll over any topic to the evening meeting if necessary. But, so our first topic is a check-in on the Waneta Public Pathway feasibility study. We are not seeking council action at this point. Our action would be to place this in the Transportation Strategic Plan Unfunded List, but we wanted to fill you in on the results of the study and see if council has any questions. So, here to make that presentation is Victoria Kovacs, our Transportation Planner.
Super. Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Kurt so nicely introduced me, I'm Victoria Kovacs, Transportation Planner in our Public Works Department, and here to share the Waneta Public Pathway feasibility study completed this past May. The full study was included in your packet. This presentation is really just a walkthrough of that study. So, as an overview, the Waneta Public Pathway is a neighborhood-initiated idea for a transportation corridor from the Brickyard Park and Ride in Bothell to the Cross Kirkland Corridor at 116th. It is envisioned as a paved, accessible, and wide corridor. We, for purposes of this study, we interpreted that to wash dot standards, which would be a 10-foot-wide path with two-foot shoulders, so 14-foot wide. And this feasibility study was pretty high-level. The purpose of it was to examine the neighborhood proposal, looking at high-level opportunities and constraints, rough order of magnitude costs, and then also identify any parallel routes we may have already mapped in our active transportation plan. This feasibility study was authorized by council through the budget process of 2022 using school zone safety camera revenues. And here's the high level. The study opinion of cost, I'm gonna call it opinion of cost, is a range from 17.8 to 19.6 million. I want to caveat that that does not include a number of important items such as right-of-way acquisition, stormwater detention, lighting, year-over-year cost escalations, or maintenance, so a big asterisk on that cost. And we did run this project through our Transportation Strategic Plan. We're, as you know, updating our comprehensive plan and the transportation element. So, if this project, which is now added to the project list, it would rank somewhere in the middle in terms of priority. It would score 185 out of a possible 350 points. And I noted there are still over 118 projects that would score higher priority than the Waneta Public Pathway. So with that, I'll move on. The city did segment the Waneta Public Pathway for ease of analysis, so I'm just gonna go through each of those segments. The pathway was scored according to eight different criteria related to user experience, directness, connectivity, overall constructability. And the report puts it in a nice color of red, yellow, green, looks kind of blue on this screen, but a quick visual reference of how feasible it would be according to these criteria. So, connectivity and directness. Does it fill a gap in the network? Is it reaching a destination? Access points, is it easy to get to from the neighborhood? Are there difficult street crossings? Active transportation potential? Are there gradual slopes? Can the surface accommodate users? Is it separated from high-vehicle traffic? Right-of-way, does it require acquisition of multiple parcels? Critical areas, does it impact wetlands, streams? Those sorts of things that would trigger a lot of environmental permitting and documentation. Structures and bridges, would it need stormwater detention, drainage, ridges, retaining walls? And then user experience. We evaluated the segments both in terms of physical safety, you know, is it separate from high-vehicle traffic? And also personal safety, do I feel isolated in this place? Are there visual connections to other things? Can other people see me? And from the Neighborhood Association, a clear priority was access to nature and this scenic experience. So, is it in a park or natural area as opposed to adjacent to a roadway? So now, I'll walk through from north to south. I think if there are questions on the way, please just interrupt me. I think that'll be the most efficient than me going through the whole thing. But, starting out at the north end, the Brickyard Park and Ride is within the city of Bothell. There is a King County-owned parcel just to the south there. That's this wooded area. And then, the city of Kirkland limit doesn't start until northeast 145th Street down here. The Waneta Neighborhood Association proposed routing is shown the solid orange line here, parallel to 405. And the dotted line is what could be a potential on-street alternative that wouldn't require as much right-of-way. The concern, running along 405, is it is wash-dot right-of-way and King County right-of-way. And I think that's it. And there will be a future stride BRT station at the Brickyard Park and Ride. So, the study opinion of cost with this segment is on the lower end of all the segments, roughly under a million. This is some photos of a site walk we took with city staff and the Waneta Neighborhood Association Chair, Doug Ruff, who's really been the champion of this idea. This is the noise wall against 405, so that would be the user experience if you were on trail here. And this is looking just north from that retaining wall. There is a stormwater detention pond for 405, so that would be a potential permitting consideration behind this fence. In looking at the criteria, this one kind of scores on the lower end. No action is recommended in this study for this segment as it is beyond city of Kirkland right-of-way, but we did run it through the evaluation process. You know, it does connect to the Park and Ride, but there aren't any other destinations in the vicinity. If it were parallel to 405, it's very difficult to access. It's sort of people's private backyards. The grading appears low, so it could be some potential error. Right-of-way, obviously would need to require considerable right-of-way there. Some critical areas, concerns potentially with that stormwater facility. No structures, so that's great. And then, the user experience might be on the lower end because you would be adjacent to that noise wall. The next segment, from 145th South to Edith Molton Park or northeast 140th Street, the Waneta Neighborhood Association path would again try to parallel 405. It would cross Waneta Creek, perhaps multiple times, depending on the grading, traverse through Windsor Vista Park, which is a city-owned park, and then through a number of other private parcels that are seemingly wooded and open, but they are environmental buffer areas for wetlands. The dash line again is what could be an on-street alternative. This is identified in our active transportation plan for a neighborhood greenway, which is a traffic-calmed street. The blue, I should note, are existing bike lanes today. So, this segment would be in the 4.2 to 4.5 million range. I did score each of the segments separately, but I should note that, as a whole, the project scores higher than each individual segment because as a whole, the segment connects to more destinations. This is the experience of that segment when you're in Windsor Vista Park. Waneta Creek has a lot of very steep, eroding banks, a lot of trees and vegetation. There has been some volunteer planting efforts, which is really great to see. And there is one wooden bridge structure, but none of this would meet the criteria for wide and accessible, so this kind of structure would need to be redone. There'd need to be multiple more of these structures for this segment. This segment has a bit more mixed criteria. You know, it does connect to some parks in the neighborhood. It's fairly good access. The active transportation potential is low, given the steep banks of the stream would need stabilization. You'd need a number of new structures such as retaining walls, boardwalks, the critical areas. There's a number of critical areas roughly paralleling the stream. Right-of-way, there's a few parcels that would need to be acquired. User experience, the scenic nature is great, but maybe sense of security might be a little bit less because you might feel a little bit isolated. So, the study recommendation is to use the on-street pathway and maintain kind of the park system as it is. Any questions on that one?
Not yet.
So, the next segment is from Edith Molton Park to northeast 132nd Street. This segment would be in the 3.2 to 3.5 million dollar range. Again, the Waneta Neighborhood Association routing would go through the park at the south end, and then on a neighborhood street. The active transportation plan does identify protected bike lanes on 108th Avenue Northeast, and the main park entrance is off of 108th Avenue Northeast. There's also Helen Keller School here in the northwest corner. I do want to point out, through the park, there are several landmark trees and several steep slopes, which I can point out a few pictures. There is an informal access at the south end of the park between the apartment building and a private property, but it's not a city-owned parcel. There is a city-owned parcel over here, but there are extremely steep slopes here. These are, again, more photos from our site walk. It was one wintry weekend, so with some snow in the pictures. On the upper right, that's that informal access. That's next to a private property in the apartment building, and this is in the lower right, that the picture, you're essentially between two fences. It's not the best experience, but it is a well-used connection. On the lower left, these are some recently completed public pathways through the dog park. They're very well-used, but again, it wouldn't meet the criteria of a transportation corridor. This would need some significant widening. And then, this is a picture from the parking lot at the base. So, this one has maybe a little less feasibility just because of the critical areas of the landmark trees, some steep slopes, and some Waneta Creek buffer area as well. The right-of-way is good. It's a city park. The structures, there'd need to be, again, soil stabilization, possibly retaining walls. Some medium in terms of security, the park is really well-used, so you are seeing more people out and about. But in terms of access points, it's not the easiest to get to unless you're already in the park from the neighborhood. It's a little bit more difficult to access. So again, the recommendation was just to continue to use the on-street routes and maintain the paths as they are, the soft-surface dog park. Okay. Nothing else still? Still keep going?
I'm watching.
The next segment, segment four, is from northeast 132nd Street to northeast 124th Street. We've heard a lot about this one in terms of public comment. The Waneta Neighborhood Association path proposes through the PSE-owned property, this is the Waneta substation, and they do own this entire parcel to northeast 128th Street, and then jogging over into an easement onto a private property for, through wetlands and stream. And this is a kind of minimum association property. It's essentially through their parking lot to northeast 124th Street. The dashed, again, could be an on-street alternative on 109th Avenue Northeast. It's a neighborhood street, so that could be a neighborhood greenway. There are some alternatives near the school. There's an existing bridge here that the school constructed across Waneta Creek and a very informal goat path to the neighborhood. There is a city-owned parcel, very skinny parcel here where the green line is showing. And then, North Kirkland Community Center is just off to the left here. Let's see. Oh, I also wanted to point out, in this PSE easement, there are sewer mains and utility mains here, so this was, would be a very difficult corridor to utilize. On the upper left is a picture of the PSE-owned property, so the Waneta substation is off in the distance. These are all private backyards against these fences, and this fence is only for PSE operations. Below that is the PSE easement on private property. There are wetlands over, just off the left of the image. And on the right is the existing bridge I mentioned on the school property. That's all I wanted to note there. So, this segment does have great connectivity and directness. It connects to the high school. It connects to major streets with bus service. There's pretty good access, some active transportation potential with not too much grading, but the right-of-way is obviously low. We would, it'd be, you'd have to acquire the whole substation. There's no room to fit beneath, between the substation and the private fences. There's vegetative buffer. There's a noise wall that was constructed for the substation. There are critical areas or wetlands, tributary of Waneta Creek. We'd have to be a number of structures such as a bridge, and the user experience might be a mixed bag, I'd say, with the substation might probably be very low, maybe on the creek very high, but I think overall is low. And only the middle segment had a significant potential. So, the recommendation was to use a greenway on the neighborhood streets and to look at kind of easements at the southern edge of the school to see if there could be a pedestrian The next segment is from northeast 124th Street to Jasper's Dog Park. This would, again, the Neighborhood Association route would kind of traverse the upper edge of the Heron Field Wetlands. The city-owned parcels are a little bit funky here, like this corner is not city-owned, so it's a mix of city and private properties. The city opinion of cost is five to 5.3, this segment. And again, the on-street alternative would be protected bike lanes or protected path on northeast 124th Street, and then on these side streets, which I cannot read from here, but essentially alongside the courthouse. This is a picture from the north end of Heron Field Wetlands. There are no traversable paths today. It really is just dense wetland, dense vegetation. It's not walkable or accessible in any way. There's lots of trees. And then, at the south end, there has been a small little carve-out for the dog park, which is pictured here in the lower left. And there is one small boardwalk from essentially the street to get to the dog park. That's the only really walkable area. And there are clear wetland signage, and the ground is very wet. So again, here we are in our winter trip. This segment overall is very low, just given the very steep slopes and the wetland designation of this area and dense vegetation. So while the scenic opportunity is really high in terms of transportation corridor and accessible pathway, this is boardwalks, retaining walls, intensive structures, intensive permitting. So, the recommendation is to use the on-street alternative. The last segment would be connecting Jasper's Dog Park to the CKC. There is an existing acreade crossing to reach the CKC at 120th Avenue Northeast. There's a RRFB. The Waneta Neighborhood Association recommendation is to, again, kind of stay in the more wooded area and use these informal pathways traversing through private properties. And then, from 116th, there'd need to be a ramp or some other structure down to the CKC because the 116th is actually above the trail at that point. This is actually, again, a lower estimated cost of 1.5 to 1.8. And the on-street pathway would again go on this pathway by the Justice Center to just access the existing RRFB crossing. So, here's a picture of some of those informal pathways. Once you leave Jasper's Dog Park, that kind of go through private property. It's very steep and really narrow goat trails, so to widen that and make that formalized would require property acquisition and tree clearing and so forth. There is one public pathway stair from some of these little goat trails to the neighborhood. That was a nice surprise. Here's a picture from essentially the CKC looking up to 116th, so you can see how the roadway is much higher than the trail down below, so there'd need to be a ramp or some other structure to make that connection. There are some existing stairs that go from the public storage building up to the street. It doesn't quite make it all the way down to the trail. I'd say there's still about another 10 to 14 vertical feet from there. So, this overall feasibility is low for this segment, just given the grade challenges, the property right-of-way challenges. There are, again, critical areas, so the recommendation would be to use the on-street route in the city. So, that was the study findings. The only next steps identified for this is to kind of commemorate this in the comprehensive plan update. We have added it to the Transportation Strategic Plan project list with a score of 185, as I mentioned at the beginning. And there are supportive policies in the neighborhood plan update being done by the Planning and Building Department. So, that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions from council.
Thank you, Victoria. And I know we rushed you through that, but you did a great job, and I encourage anyone that hasn't read the study to read it. It's very comprehensive, but great job. Any comments, questions, council? Jay, or Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Victoria. Thank you for walking through this. And as the mayor had said, the feasibility study really answered a bunch of questions to look at this great vision that the Waneta Neighborhood has to say, okay, what would it take for us to go forward? It's covered in the packet, but didn't, would like to get some details just on the record of what would be next steps within the CIP, because you mentioned it's unfunded, but if there were some segments, and there's a couple that look interesting to me that may warrant for future exploration, what would be the timeline and potential process for that?
Yeah. If council wanted to study a particular segment or advance a particular segment, that would be helpful to hear now. Otherwise, this will just be in the list, and given where it lands in terms of prioritization, it would not be within the six-year window of the CIP. So, City Manager?
And maybe I can elaborate on that. So, you will get in September and October the actual transmitted preliminary CIP, and I think that would be the place, if there's a specific set of subsegments you want to look at, would be the opportunity to either move stuff around or take reserves or do something like that. So, I think that that's probably the appropriate time because then you'd be able to compare it with the other elements of the CIP and decide whether or not you think this is a priority.
Okay. So then, two comments. One is, I support the staff recommendation on segment four, from Waneta High School to 124th Street of saying, what are the things that could happen with that easement? That is a connection that is more direct than the alternatives. Many other places in this feasibility study talked about greenways or other things where you had a nearby adjacent or adjacent connection. This is one where the connections are less direct, and so it doesn't come out in the slide really well, but it's the yellow part between the blue line and the red line to say, okay, what could we do there? And if I were to look at this overall study and say, the overall study is unfunded, this segment may be unfunded, but I would put it in a different category to say, maybe we want to take some next steps in getting more information or design or something like that. So, I'd like to have that conversation in the fall.
Just to clarify, are you talking just primarily about the southern section?
Correct.
To go from 123rd or whatever it is across to the passer there?
Yes. Yep. And then, secondly, you noted in your report, Victoria, and in the feasibility study, several places had soft-surface paths. And while I agree that the goal for non-arrive paths should be the full wash-dot standard or even like as we've envisioned on the Cross Kirkland Corridor, having both a paved path and a separate walking path in our long-term vision, but there's also mention of existing soft-surface paths in Edith Moon Park and Jasper's, and just understanding if there are plans to, or opportunities to enhance, connect, or expand those, that may be something else that might be interesting to look at. And I'm not sure if that's something parks has looked at as saying what they want to do around those paths. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Victoria, just echoing again, great presentation and really comprehensive report, super helpful. And a ton of useful information in there about, you know, some of the challenges that the overall project, all six segments face. Like Deputy Mayor, I was sort of focused on this segment too, between the high school and 124th, and was wondering what we could do, although what I actually, you know, coming to an understanding that there is a way for folks living south of 124th to cross and walk through the neighborhood and access the high school, it's not the direct route, but that got me more comfortable. Because we did hear from students who were like, you know, we would like to have access from 124th to a high school campus. It does exist, it's just not direct. And that's correct, right?
Yes. So, there's a bridge over here.
Yeah.
On the southwest edge of the school property.
And there's two public path connections.
Right, right. I will say it's not the most pleasant experience, the public path connection. It's very narrow, I'd say maybe two, three feet, and it's dirt for a long portion, and then the bridge is beautiful and nice. And then, I think what's tempting about this, it looks like a nice direct line on the map, and this portion is, you know, an open property, like, oh, it just looks like grass.
Yeah.
Once you get to this portion of the condo, it is essentially their parking lot. So, you'd need to totally redo, take their parking lot, I guess.
Well, I, when I was in school, I walked uphill both ways, so. A little dirt path. I don't, a little lighthearted, right? Okay. So, this was where I was, I will say to my colleagues and the public and the staff, this is where I was focused. I do feel like there are options here for pedestrian access to the school, so I don't necessarily, it doesn't rise to as high a level as it did when I sort of initially embarked on reviewing the report. I did, on the question of sort of acquisition, I'm gonna, general question, just our general experience, and Kurt, City Manager, maybe you feel like this is a question maybe more for you than Victoria, but. But, you know, one of the things we're looking at here is we're sort of comparing an ambitious project that would involve a lot of property acquisition with some existing transportation strategy plan projects, the greenway projects that we have. Those greenway projects, they do involve, I assume, a lot of, I mean, the traffic calming measures involve a lot of infrastructure construction, but those are public right-of-ways. Just generally, how much more expensive is acquiring private property for projects like this versus what we can do with our existing public right-of-ways?
You want to answer just off the top of your head?
No, 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 no. I tried to preface it with just like sort of generally our experience.
Well, I think it would be hard to know. I mean, the first question is, do you have a willing seller? And then you do an assessment, right? I think one of the challenges of this is we haven't often found people who live next to trails want to sell property to be next to trails, even though after the trail is there, they like it. But when it's first talked about, people tend to not want pathways next to their house, right? Which then gets you into would you condemn, which then gets you into is there an alternative? Because a person who doesn't want the property purchased will say, we'll have you export all the other alternatives. So this, I think, would be complicated to acquire for those reasons. If you had resistance by the condo association or resistance by the property owners, and then you'd have to say, how much does it matter to us to try to get it? But obviously, you could start those conversations and see.
And what, City Manager, what you're describing is not just for the segments, for the entire link, everywhere where we've identified that we are going to have
Right.
meaningful amounts of private property acquisitions is going to be a challenge. And none of that cost or time
It's not correct.
or effort is included in the numbers that we're looking at.
Right. That's correct.
And last thing I want to know, Victoria, if you could go to the last slide. Yeah, so unfunded project in transportation, I am glad to see what we are doing with this idea. I'm glad to see that we are capturing it in the neighborhood plan, in the transportation strategic plan. The score of 185, I did wonder, like, how often with unfunded projects in our transportation strategic plan, how often do we revisit that scoring? Is that something that's revisited often? Like, if circumstances substantially change, would we score, would we be, you know, potentially score this differently in a future council looking at this?
Because, again, it's always up to the council. But what we would normally propose to you is you'd rescore when you re-updated the transportation strategic plans. So the next time you came back around in six years is when you'd consider it. Events that could change that is, you know, you have a conversation with a congressperson who says, hey, I'm really interested in this, right? Or you could get grant funds or something else happens or a state legislature. But generally, we would just treat it like all the others and you'd update it when you updated all of them at the next cycle.
And in the meantime, last comment, in the meantime, it's eligible for staff to evangelize it for grant funding and legislative budget requests?
Yes. Yeah. That's one of the reasons we felt it was good to place it there is, or the community can go advocate as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Falcón.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you so much, staff. You did an amazing job with this report. And thanks to Oneida Neighborhood Association, all the community members, I'll keep those thank yous brief. I wish it was better news on the feasibility of this and that it was easier to do because I do think, you know, initially, it sounds like a really great idea. I wish there were so many hurdles to actually moving forward to get that done. Like my colleagues who have commented, I also was really focusing on section four. We knew coming in that that was the area that a lot of folks in the community and the advocates have been saying is kind of like the low-hanging fruit part of this and something that we're hoping to have accomplished sooner than the others. So I do share Deputy Mayor's perspective that I'd like to dig into that a little bit more to see if there's something that we could do there. You know, hearing that it's, you know, what's existing is indirect and unpleasant, you know, makes me want to look at that even more because I think of, you know, we want to keep students safe who are walking and biking and rolling to and from school, who are already choosing to do that now. We also want to encourage more students to walk, roll, and bike, right, to and from school. So if we can do that by making it more efficient and more pleasant, and there's an affordable way that we, and a feasible way for us to move forward in doing that, I'd like to at least explore a little bit more what that would look like. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Tim Chisen.
Thank you. So this is 17, 18, 19 million. The, did we separate out section four with a cost?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there.
Let's see, go there.
Okay, thank you. And is it possible to rank, is it possible to rank this separately as opposed to 185?
Yes. This segment itself would be the 180 score.
All right, 180. Oh, all right. Not a big change.
All done?
All right, never mind.
Yeah. So the, just this chart, again, is the scoring of all 430 projects identified in the transportation strategic plan, just so you see how they distribute in terms of their scores. So the Oneida pathway would be, pretty much be in the middle. And currently being advanced in our fiscally constrained list, that does not include grants, other external funding sources, other partnerships. There are, I think, 11 projects being moved forward right now. So this, as I think I noted, there were over 100 projects that would rank higher than the GPP, just looking objectively at score. That's not to say that there are other great reasons or interest to bring up that study.
Okay. Thank you. Excuse me. I just want to thank the advocates and the Neighborhood Association for bringing this forward. And I'm really glad that we took the time to evaluate this comprehensively with real costs and real dollars. And one of the things that, when you showed that staircase, I thought, well, we've also got ADA issues moving forward in this. So I do support the staff recommendation, and I'm willing to have a conversation in the fall around the CIP. But I think we're moving in the wrong direction. But I do want to recognize that the, some community members will be disappointed with this result. But we now have true answers on the cost. So, thank you. City Manager, we didn't make a half hour, sorry.
That's okay. You know, our time is your time.
Okay. So we're moving on to, oh, Victoria, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm rushing. We're moving on to city flag process draft resolution. City Manager?
Yeah, thank you. And so, again, just because of the time, what we'll do is maybe suggest we get through the presentation. And if the discussion continues, we'll just roll this over to the business segment. So today, I wanted to talk to you first, discussion about the flag process that came out of legislative request memo and council direction to proceed with creating a community process to develop the flag for the city. We have our first proposal for you to consider, and to walk you through that is David Ulbricht, our communication manager.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. As City Manager noted, here to talk about a very exciting and fun project that we have before us, creating a city flag. So very briefly, presentation will cover just a bit of background, bring us up to date on where we've been and where we're going, then talk about what staff proposed as sort of a draft community engagement process, and finally honing in on the draft legislation, 5636 itself. So first, a bit of background. On the screen, you can see depicted the kind of the de facto flag of the City of Kirkland, which was made in haste, I believe, a number of years ago for an Association of Washington City's event, the Parade of Flags or something of that nature. And on February 2nd, Councilmember Sweet requested legislative request memo for staff to return with some options for evaluating creating a flag, which was returned in April. And during that meeting, staff talked through the potential benefits of creating a flag, also describing some criteria that a professional organization, the North American Vexillological Association, I practice that one a lot, what they kind of put forth as sort of good criteria for what makes really meaningful flags, also providing some options and recommendations around a community engagement process for this. Council made a motion and moved ahead with that recommendation. And staff returned here tonight for the first conversation around the community engagement, which is kind of the central piece of this process. Based off of council feedback tonight, staff is ready to return at the next meeting or a future meeting, as needed, to bring back to council for consideration an updated resolution. So there's no questions. As articulated in the memorandum, I just wanted to walk through kind of step-by-step some of the key milestones of the proposed draft community engagement process. So first, staff intend to kick off this process at City Hall for All in a sort of mini-town hall style event, likely up in the chambers. And this would really orient the community to the process ahead of us, the main criteria that we're looking for, and really just generate a lot of energy and excitement, as well as start to recruit for a advisory group from the community. Next up, following that, sometime in the fall, we would launch a online platform. And so this would be the means by which the city would start to collect proposed designs for flags. And staff has done an initial research on some platforms, we've not identified a preferred option yet. But that process would include, you know, many fields to accompany a visual, including a name of the flag, if they have one, the submitter's name, some contact information, a description of kind of the inspiration for the design, a little bit of the meaning behind it, some general demographic information, things like that. And the process would be, when submissions come in, staff would review them before anything is kind of made then public to the rest of the community as a way to check for ones that don't necessarily adhere to our criteria, particularly around not adhering to our DEIB values. So along with the launch of the online platform, in the fall, we would also actively recruit and start to form a community advisory group, name absolutely subject to change, but Kirkland Flag Learners Advisory Group, or KFLAG, couldn't help ourselves here. That process, we would start to recruit and, you know, schedule meetings and that sort of thing in earnest. And I'd like to just take a quick minute to talk about what was proposed in the staff memorandum, a very similar makeup and process as with the Parks Funding Exploratory Committee, PFAC, with some notable changes. One, a smaller group, that would probably be easier to move through, you know, designed by committee is rarely a good thing. And so helping hone in the conversations, also honing in on some groups that have perhaps a more particular interest, the Heritage Society, Arts Commission, things like that, as well as potentially reaching out to local tribes for some representation there. And then just some at-large community members, make sure that we're reaching folks that we may not normally engage with, renters and so forth. So this was the initial proposed idea, but we can absolutely get into discussion later on in the presentation. So back into our timeline, in the later fall into winter months, the advisory group would be filtering through the potentially hundreds of submissions that we would get on our online platform with the intent of honing in on a shortlist, perhaps seven to nine, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little less, of leading options that then the advisory group with staff would bring to council for kind of an initial review of some of those. At that time, council would be able to look at those and the recommendation would be to select, you know, a top finalist, two or three perhaps, of designs to then go back out via an online community poll to kind of get the last sense from the community on any of the preferred designs from that shortlist. And then bringing that information back to council to help inform the choice of whether to go with, you know, the specific ones there, whether to kind of, you know, mix and match a little bit. And final design, kind of resting with the city and the city council on what flag design we'll move forward with. Following that, we'll move into production with it, with the intent of, again, having the flag ready for the AWC event, the Parade of Cities, and then as well as the Fourth of July Parade next year. So that is a very brief overview of the process. And then, of course, here is the legislation itself, which we can get into more detailed discussion at the end here and/or, again, maybe during the business agenda as we need to adjourn shortly. But on the left there is all of our whereas statements. It's fairly similar to what was in the legislative request memorandum and just restating some city values. And then on the right is the sections one, two, and three. One, really articulating and calling for that community engagement process. Two, making sure that we're adopting it in 2025, as intended. And then three, articulating the criteria by which the, we would be seeking the community submissions for. And that is a combination of the recommendations from the North American Vexillological Association, two for two, and as well as a few city criteria, namely be related to Kirkland, and then also, you know, represent or otherwise, you know, adhere to our DEIB values. And so with that, oh, no. My font, my font didn't come through. I apologize. It's a really nice handwritten-looking font, but it says "our new flag" here. So that concludes my very brief overview.
Thank you.
Yeah, turn it over to you, Madam Mayor.
The only thing I want to add is, the reason we picked learners is we would have a sort of educational opportunity for whatever advisory group is selected because not everyone grows up learning how to pick flags. And so we'd provide some background and some education as to the purpose and how to think about it. So that group would have a lot more focus than just, hey, we're interested, but we'd help them have some tools to make those.
There's some education.
Yeah.
We have 12 minutes, and I have a feeling we all have lots of comments.
So my suggestion might be to start comments on the community process itself and not necessarily the resolution or the criteria of the resolution.
Yes.
And then we can break if we need to and then.
Okay. We'll try. Who wants to go first? Councilor Falcón.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I just want to call out the elephant in the room, not literally, but thank Kurt Gressner for bringing this up. Thank you for that.
Indeed.
You know, thank you for bringing forth this idea. I love how this is really focused around community, being a community-driven. I know that's something that we all really wanted to see happen as part of this, and I hope that that will continue. I like that we have a variety of organizations listed. I hope that we're not super rigid with that list of organizations there. I hope that, like, that's just giving us a flavor, but I don't think we need to have, you know, folks from every one of those organizations. I don't think that we should, you know, necessarily communicate that there's a dedicated seat for each of those organizations. I think, you know, in my mind, I think that's good to give us a flavor. I think there are some other, I would like to see more at-large community members. I'd like to see just more everyday folks included in this. And I don't want it to be disproportionately weighted of the folks who are already, already super engaged in our community, right? If it's as-is, you know, this is going to be like nine-tenths people who, you know, we hear from all the time, who are already super engaged. And I think this is a great opportunity to engage people who are not already super engaged with local government. This is like a fun, low barrier, you know, you don't have to have a lot of experience with the city to kind of maybe want to and get engaged in this. So I really see this as an opportunity to connect with more folks as well. So I would really love to see that kind of flipped on its head and way more general community engagement. I also see this group as not just folks who are going to vet through the process, but really be champions out in the community and trying to get a lot of people to make submissions to, right, and get people excited about this. And so I'd like us to think about that with who, how we publicize these, this group as well, this community engagement group. For example, I'd love to see a lot of kids in our schools submit ideas. So I think talking to like our art docents, you know, having an art docent on here would be a great idea. The volunteers who go in and teach art classes, I can see this being in art lesson where they teach about flags. You know, I'm an art docent, so, well, I was, you know, this past year. So I can imagine leading a lesson with the kids on city flags and what that means and what good design is, and then having them each design a flag, and maybe it'll inspire, then giving them instructions to send home to their families on how to submit that. So I would love to just find ways, again, to get children and youth, and I love that we have youth council on there, but even broader than that, reaching out to folks in the community. Same thing with, you know, in our senior centers, you know, in our senior community, living communities and other places. I think there are, if we can find connections there of folks who could help us, you know, really broaden our outreach with folks in the community on this, I think that would be wonderful to see. So those are my comments on.
Awesome. I was going to say, you have to learn how to say.
Vexillological.
If you're going to teach it as a If you're going to teach it as a docent.
It'll be our spelling word of the week.
Three for three.
Anyone? Okay, I'll go.
I'll go.
No, Councilwoman Falcone.
I can't tell the color of mine.
That's odd.
Okay. Sorry, I just highlighted another limitation to my colorblindness. Okay. By the way, whoever came up with this graphic, just kudos.
Shucks, thank you. Thanks, Councilmember Black, appreciate it.
The flag process is awesome. I really appreciate Councilman Falcone's comments. I kind of agree. When it comes to our advisory group, I don't want it to be too rigid. I want it to be people who are particularly excited about this project. I do like the community building aspect of this, and I'll probably have a comment when we talk about the resolution, about one of the recitals, which I think we can sort of focus a little bit more on just, you know, making this a community building exercise that's, you know, that's fun. And so I agree with that. You know, I thought a lot about sort of how the final steps of this process should go, and I've gone back and forth whether, you know, the public should narrow it down for the council, and then the council should make the final decision, or whether the council should help narrow it down with help from the advisory group down for the public, and then the public should vote. I honestly, I still haven't decided exactly what I think is the best approach to that. There's still a part of me that thinks the advisory group helps narrow it down, the public votes, and then the council is really well-informed about what the community is excited about when we vote on the final approval. But I am also swayed by the argument that, you know, council can narrow it down to two or three options, let the public vote. There's, I don't, I see that, I think that would be equally valid. But I think, I mean, it looks, you know, this, the process that we have up here is more like a community vote, and then the council makes the final decision. So I think, I don't know if we have to talk about that or how we're going to figure that one out. And I'm just, I just told everybody I'm of two minds, so it's not really that helpful. I love the kickoff at City Hall for All. I think that's all I have because I think my other comments are really directed at the resolution itself.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I am very excited about a process to have something out there that's readily identifiable for our city that's not Kirkland signature, which is how most of the world knows our city today. To Councilmember Black's comments, I really like the engagement process that staff set out because in the end, there may be something that we want to do from a design standpoint to say, boy, there's two really top choices, and I like this element from this, and do we put this together? Because I look at this not as an art selection process, and Madam Mayor, you'll have, you always have the last words. I see your reaction.
Didn't all answer.
But I see this as a, not an art selection process, but a design process. And it is very possible that we'll need to help break the tie and do that in a way that maybe combines some concepts. So that gives us the flexibility to go do this. When we have in the past had this kind of design process, the last opportunity was the Totomite Connector Bridge, where we had a number of different things. We ended up picking a particular design for that, but nothing would have kept us from picking different elements of that, to have something that's very visible for our city. And I think we can, I trust that we can do this and not want to give us that flexibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Apologize for telegraphing. Then I'm going to go ahead. So I think, I love KFLAG first. I lolled when I read it. I would throw out the staff recommendation on the advisory group, and instead of going back, as Councilmember Falcone said, our usual people, I would just make it open. And I would just let people that are excited and engaged and enthusiastic apply and go from there. And of course, someone's going to apply, and they're going to go, I'm a graphic designer, or I'm a member of the Heritage Society, but let's just open it up to everybody. This is a chance to really have some fun. So I would like to just change that advisory process. I think that we should keep the group small, and I counted, I think you had 15, I would do like 10 to 12. I liked that you said we're going to vet the designs before they become public. I was a little worried about that. What I was responding to with Deputy Mayor is we are asking people to design something for free. We're asking them to give us their intellectual property. And I'm uncomfortable with us taking something that someone spent their heart and soul designing, and then we're like, oh, we're just going to mash it with someone else's design and change the colors. I hope you don't mind. So I'm very sensitive to doing that, and I think when we reach out for submissions, we're fairly, very clear that this is for free. I think there should be some sort of reward at the end. Maybe you're the one that gets to walk in the Fourth of July Parade carrying this flag. But I think we need to be, I think people are going to be super excited, and they're going to be engaged, and they're going to put forth designs, but we just, we need to give something back for that effort. And I, the public poll, it's like, are they voting? Are they providing feedback? I'm not really clear on what we gain, and I worry about, one of the designs is popular in the Kingsgate neighborhood, and everybody in Kingsate votes, you know, it's just, I'm sensitive to that being skewed by different groups that people belong to. So I want to spend a little more thought on that. And it sounds like I have a lot of criticisms, but I'm super excited, just so I'm clear. And then I went back and forth on, should council, if we decide that people vote, we should, and there is a very clear winner, council should approve that winner. So I'm not sure whether we have the final choice or the community has the final choice. So I think it's a good start, but I think there's some things that we still need to flesh out. We have one second left, or one minute left.
I think we should go ahead and pause there and go up to the executive session and then continue this in the business discussion.
All right. So since we have not completed our discussion of this item, unless there is an objection, I will include it on our regular meeting agenda under business as item 9B. Any objections? Thank you. This concludes the study session for this evening. We will now go into executive session as authorized by RCW 42.30.1A Roman numeral two and one Roman number one. We expect the executive session to will end approximately at 7:00, and we'll be back in open session at 7:30 for our regular meeting. Thanks, everybody. We are back in session following a study session on the Winita Public Pathway Feasibility Study and a City Flag Process Draft Resolution. Oh, and an executive session. Before moving to our agenda items, I want to explain to the community that a result of suspicious activity on the city's internal network last week, city staff proactively shut down access to the network out of abundance of caution. As a result of this disruption, this meeting is being held in-person only. The meeting is not being streamed live and is not available for remote attendance. The meeting is still being recorded and will be posted online at a later date. I apologize that we do not have the virtual option tonight. We are moving first to honors and proclamations. City Manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So we're going to be proclaiming July 2024 as Disability Pride Month in the city of Kirkland. For all the reasons that are outlined in the proclamation, I would also like to note for the public and the folks who watch after, that there are several links in the memo itself as to where people can find more information, and also those are referenced in the proclamation as well. We also have David Stansfield Garner, the co-founder and secretary treasurer of Connective Strength here to receive the proclamation. And Connective Strength is an elders' down-low syndrome education organization, so we're very happy to have.
And Councilmember Tim Chisen will be reading the proclamation.
Yeah. Have David come on up, please.
Thank you, and we are.
Let's have David.
Welcome.
Okay. All are welcome. Okay, we are proclaiming the month of July as Disability Pride Month in Kirkland. Whereas Disability Pride Month is celebrated every July, marking the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, signed into law in 1990, a landmark legislation that broke down barriers of inclusion for people with disability and protects them from discrimination. And whereas the ADA provides guidance for people with disabilities by providing resources about their rights, laws, and regulations. Whereas Disability Pride Month is an opportunity to honor the history, achievements, experiences, and struggles of everyone within the disability community. Examples of highly successful people with disabilities are Stephen Hawking, Frida Kolo, President FDR, Stevie Wonder, Helen Keller, Ralph Braun, John Hockenberry, and others. And whereas the disabilities have been marginalized and misunderstood for generations, and their intersecting identities should be acknowledged, valued, and respected. And whereas intersectional factors of sex, race, gender identity, sexual orientation, and other demographic identifiers contribute to barriers in acceptance and diagnosis. And whereas although society often thinks of people with disabilities as a single population, it's a diverse group of people within a wide range of needs. And whereas talking to your family about disability is an important and ongoing conversation that will help foster inclusion for the next generation. And whereas there are several ways to celebrate Disability Pride Month by amplifying the voices and experiences of people with disabilities, uplifting them to share their story or attend a Disability Pride event. And whereas local events and educational resources in our community have helped celebrate Disability Pride Month include book recommendations from the King County Library System that may be found at kcls.org, and a list of educational materials, including books, films, and a list of organizations that support people with disabilities provided by the Seattle Theater Group at stgpresent.org. And whereas the city is committed to making Kirkland a safe, inclusive, and welcoming place where people of all abilities belong. Now, therefore, Mayor Kelly Curtis does hereby proclaim July as Disability Pride Month in Kirkland and encourage all community members to promote acceptance and appreciation of disabled people as family members, friends, classmates, coworkers, and neighbors making valuable contributions to our community.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Curtis. Thank you, Councilmember. I'm not going to say your name right. Sorry. Thank you for this honor. At Connective Strength, we are dedicated to educating about elders' down-low syndrome and its many comorbidities. May was EDS Awareness Month for elders' down-low, and we released our first publication called Graceful Strength, written by patients for family members and patients understanding their diagnosis. We advocate for those with this rare and sometimes invisible disease within the larger disabled community. This proclamation is a crucial step in recognizing the challenges faced by people with disabilities. Working together, we can create a more inclusive, equitable, and compassionate community for everyone. Thank you.
All right. We are now moving on to items of the audience, from the audience. This is the time in our meeting when we normally hear from the public on matters that are not quasi-judicial or scheduled for a public hearing, of which there are none scheduled this evening. Please limit your remarks to three minutes, and the council will receive comments, up to three comments on both sides of the issue. If you are present and would like to address the council during this items from the audience period, please sign up using the sign-up sheet located in the back of the room. This evening, there is no opportunity to provide comments virtually, but feel free to submit written comments to the city council by email or through our R. Kirkland portal, which is linked on our webpage. We do receive all of these communications and review them in a timely manner. Items from the audience is an important part of our business meeting, and we ask that everyone be treated with kindness and respect. We discourage people from using obscenities and personal attacks. We ask that you please do not clap or applaud after a speaker or express your disagreement with a speaker. We want everyone in Kirkland to feel welcome expressing their viewpoints regardless of content. As a reminder, items from the audience cannot be used for promoting or opposing a candidate's campaign or a ballot position. Because they can be disruptive, signs and placards are not allowed in council chambers during our meetings regardless of content. So we are doing old school. I have a piece of paper. We haven't done this since COVID. So first signed up, I have Mr. Hoff. Welcome.
Good evening. Glad to be here. My name is Jim Hoff. I live at 12830 Northeast 73rd on South Rose Hill. I'm here to talk about NSP. First, I thought I'd just give you the credentials for the comments that will follow. My credentials are that I have been a principal in three school districts, principaling all three levels of schools for 40 years in the state of Washington. I served 14 years as the Safe Walk Hearing Examiner for the Bellevue School District, and I have participated in the NSP process since its second year, and I notice at least one city council member who used to participate with me. Anyway, those are my credentials for the comments I make. The comments I'm going to make, I want to first say have nothing to do with at least two members who are here from the city who have been involved with the process. But since COVID, the process has been rather difficult, in my personal opinion, and I believe that as a result, that we've had three different people to lead the process. They were thrust into those, had little background, little knowledge, and for sure, almost no history in terms of what they were able to do as leadership. So I stand here saying that you're coming a little later to look at this whole process, and I noticed that one of the comments at the end was that there might be a consideration to sunset. And sunset means it's going down, and it's going to be very dark. And I'm here to speak against sunsetting. I would really call for you to have a hiatus or a moratorium of one year, and that in that time, that a member of the city staff be appointed that has the vision, that has the knowledge, that has the history, and that the whole process be re-looked at, that it be rewritten in terms of the instructions that go out to the various neighborhoods so that the newcomers, and we've had many newcomers, and they don't seem to know what's going on, and every time, they think they want to rewrite the process. I think we need a succinct process. It needs to be in place, and it needs to be an effective process that involves all of the neighborhoods. And I, for one, was one of the people that worked very hard this past year to get us back to a limited amount of money so that everything didn't go for flashing beacons. So I hope my remarks help you in your deliberations, and I hope that we proceed with a good future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Mike Van Der Slice.
Yes, Van Der Slice. Good evening. My name is Mike Van Der Slice. I'm here with my wife Sharon tonight. We are 26-year residents of Kirkland, and we live at 5726 Lake Washington Boulevard, and that is the corner of 58th and Lake Washington across from Houghton Park. I'm here to speak with you about the urgent problem of traffic safety on Lake Washington Boulevard, and hopefully to suggest some improvements in the way in which we are managing and enforcing that problem. Specifically, the problem that we observe as we have a deck above the crosswalk between, across Lake Washington Boulevard. and it needs to be an effective process that involves all of the neighborhoods. And I, for one, was one of the people that worked very hard this past year to get us back to a limited amount of money so that everything didn't go for flashing beacons. So, I hope my remarks help you in your deliberations, and I hope that we proceed with a good future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Mike Van Der Slice.
Yes, Van Der Slice. Good evening. My name is Mike Van Der Slice. I'm here with my wife Sharon tonight. We are 26-year residents of Kirkland, and we live at 5726 Lake Washington Boulevard. And that is the corner of 58th and Lake Washington across from Houghton Park. I'm here to speak with you about the urgent problem of traffic safety on Lake Washington Boulevard, and hopefully to suggest some improvements in the way in which we are managing and enforcing that problem. Specifically, the problem that we observe as we have a deck above the crosswalk between, across Lake Washington Boulevard at 58th. We regularly see dangerous driving, dangerous driving defined as motorcycles doing wheelies, cars leaving at a rapid pace and leaving rubber as they leave Houghton Park. There's speeding at all times of day, all manner of vehicles past our building. There is lack of observance of pedestrians in crosswalks, especially as it relates to, again, 58th over to Houghton Park, where many pedestrians are there with their children, babies in baby carriages and so forth. It's highly dangerous, and we've observed accidents of various kinds in that crosswalk. And then my personal favorite is the passing in turn lane, passing other vehicles from the turn lane, thinking that it was a passing lane rather than a turn lane. So, vehicles that have to be doing 40, 50, 60 miles an hour to pass other vehicles, particularly as they leave, as they leave toward Bellevue on Lake Washington Boulevard. We have a long history of calls and emails with many of you on the council, and to and from Chief Harris. We are aware of patrol and enforcement efforts by the police, most recently by a lengthy and well-detailed email from Chief Harris, which we thank her for. And we also are grateful to the Parks Department for their recent attempts to close down the park at 10 o'clock and to control late-night behavior there. But what we're here to say is that the pace of the problem is outpacing the enforcement efforts being made relative to it. And so, simply put, from our standpoint, we are not doing an adequate job of controlling the public safety issue on Lake Washington Boulevard. That said, we are here to constructively engage and not to criticize. And so, we do have a few suggestions, some of which, or maybe all of which, will not be new to you, but we'd like to weigh in on them.
Mr. Van Der Slice, you just ran out of time.
Very well, thank you.
But we have received your letter. And if there's any follow-up you'd like to do, please feel free.
Thank you. Will do. Thank you.
Evelyn Blatt.
Good evening. I'm Evelyn Blatt, and I'm a 20-year resident in the same condo as Mike Van Der Slice. So, I won't give you my address again. I'm here tonight to address a problematic issue of excessive car and motorcycle noise along Lake Washington Boulevard. Specifically, the cars and motorcycles speeding and racing in front of Lake Washington Boulevard on 58th across the street from Houghton Park. It occurs daily at dinnertimes between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m., and all day during Friday night, and all day Saturday and Sunday. Since 2018, our community has been communicating with police chiefs, telephoning the police, and attending council meetings to explain the impact of this noise. For the past six years, we cannot enjoy sitting or dining on our patio because of the noise. This year, our living room is right up to the windows along Lake Washington Boulevard, and we can't enjoy sitting and watching TV in our living room. We can't hear. This is ridiculous. At this point, we're requesting stricter enforcement of existing laws and regulations. Two years ago, at a council meeting, we were told about a noise study to provide information on this issue. But we have yet to hear news from this study. We've been patient for six years, but now we're requesting the council's action. Redmond has installed a sign at its entrance stating $160 fine for modified mufflers. Kirkland had a similar sign one or two years ago. Unfortunately, it was taken down, even though it was effective. Please consider putting back the sign and enforcing it. It helped. Possible solutions could include installing speed bumps along Lake Washington Boulevard, which might slow down the racing cars. Lowering the speed limit might help. We read in the newspaper today that Bellevue is considering going from 25 miles an hour to 20. Lake Washington could become a one-way, and Lakeview, another one-way. In closing, I want to thank the council for the opportunity to address you with our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next. Loring. It begins with a P. The last name begins with an L. I apologize. I'm having trouble with your handwriting. Patricia? No, I apologize.
Well, hello, everyone.
Hi. Welcome.
I've lived in Kirkland for a long time. I live with my sister on 109th Avenue Northeast. We are two ladies of graciousness and wisdom. And we are now faced, once again, with somebody having ideas about our property and our property values. The talk of opening up a walkway, a pathway, where there is now already a substation, it's not safe for anybody to open that up. First of all, we will lose security. We will lose privacy in our backyards. And that's a lot of us on back both ways. The property values will be affected because the security will be lower. The other thing, the worst thing that could happen is we'll get more campers trying to get into this space. It's not meant for public access. It's never been meant for public access. If student safety is an issue, and students want to be safe, my suggestion is take out the air plugs, put the phone in your backpack, and pay attention to where you're walking. These are not elementary school kids we're talking about. These are teenagers who know their way around, hopefully. Anyway, I'm kind of emotionally involved in this because we had to really put up with the lot to get that lovely substation in our backyard, which is one lot over. But that's all I've got to say. And I hope everybody uses good judgment. I think the people that put this up don't reflect the fact that property owners have special rights, and the right to have private property, stay private.
Thank you. And we did look at the public pathway during our study session, so you may want to go back and view that recording.
Okay.
Jeanne Large.
Good evening. My name's Jeanne Large. I live just across the street, 225 Fourth Avenue. And anything else you need to know about me? No. Okay. I'm here to speak a little bit about affordable housing. But I was inspired later, earlier today, by reading the Piennale Community Survey Report that was online. I read that this afternoon and thought, gee, that's connected. There were a couple of issues in, where question two asks about what are their concerns? And the number two issue on that was lack of affordable housing and rental prices increasing. And I was surprised and pleased and inspired, okay? Another one was that in question 37, service priorities was ensuring attainable housing for all income levels. And so, those were very moving pieces to it. I'm encouraged to see this in the report, and I'm glad you're dealing with it. Affordable housing's been a big issue for me almost my entire life. I lived until age 22 in a small two-bedroom house with seven people in a seven-person family. So, I understand why some families need and use affordable housing. Also, then, as a homeowner and now as a resident of this city, it's an important issue. I remember talking with City of Kirkland employees a number of years ago, when I was a resident or an employee of the City of Redmond. Anyway, the people I was talking to were police and fire employees of Kirkland. And they said they couldn't afford to live in Kirkland, and that was about 20 years ago. And they said that they lived in Monroe and Enham Claw, not a great location to respond to emergencies. I encourage you to continue to address this issue and to include it in your strategic plans and in our actions. An example that I've raised several times with you, I think before, is this piece of property on the southeast corner of the City Hall property. Before we built the parking lots, it had a duplex and a single house in it. In addition, there were two other houses in the property that is now the parking lot. Anyway, it's still sitting there empty many years later. It's a piece of city property. It could be used for affordable housing. It's right across the street from my condo. You know, it's lovely to look at right now as it's green, but I'd rather that we put somebody a place to sleep and eat and live. Please consider affordable housing as an important goal for all of us. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Kira.
And I apologize for not trying your last.
No, it's fine. Krimkevich is a lot. I'm sure you understand, councilman. Hello, City Council members and city staff. Thank you for having me, and thank you for your enthusiasm and efforts in everything you do for this city. My husband and I live in Kirkland with our three small children, and it's a minor miracle I made it out of the house tonight. And I'm really excited to be able to speak with you. However, my oldest was born when we lived in a 20-story building in New York City, and we loved it. It was awesome. We knew all our neighbors. It was the same kind of community that I have here. However, having a baby in a tall building in New York City was hard. I was tired of people walking out of restaurants and waking my baby up at 6:00 p.m. I was tired of being physically confined to the radius in which I could push my stroller. I was tired of having to hand-carry every single gallon of milk my family consumed five blocks down the street. So, me, along with every other young family that I knew in New York City, decided it was time to leave. And we looked all around the country, and we wound up in Kirkland. We specifically wound up in suburban Kirkland. I'm here to speak against the dramatic upzoning a quarter-mile into almost every single residential neighborhood in Kirkland. This upzoning radically increases density for Norkirk, South Rose Hill, North Rose Hill, Wanita, Kingsdade, and virtually all of Market and Houghton. The map currently being circulated by the city that highlights the corridors, the traffic corridors, appears to show where the zoning will be increased, but it's not really true to scale. And a quarter-mile actually covers more than the map suggests. It goes quite deep into these neighborhoods. As currently drafted, developers will fill these neighborhoods with four-to-six-story apartment buildings with minimal setbacks and significantly reduce parking requirements. But I didn't see in the 700-page comprehensive plan, which, thank you all for reading and going through, I know it's an incredibly painful process, how this increased density impacts our streets. Lake Street, Market Street, Sixth Street, and the other proposed transit corridors are high-volume, slow-moving, mostly one-lane residential roads. The plan also does not address how neighborhood streets branching off of the corridors can handle more density. There'll be lots more traffic. There'll be increased on-street parking, emergency vehicles being blocked on clogged streets, and much higher cut-through traffic in residential neighborhoods like Norkirk and Houghton. Many of these transit, or proposed transit corridors, like Lake Street, Market Street, and Sixth Street, are also not really walking distance to any essential businesses like grocery stores, which makes it difficult to reduce car reliance and accommodate these reduced parking restrictions that we want to add. And let me tell you, no one who can help it is going to carry their five gallons of milk five blocks down the road. We have yet to see proposed plans for how the city will provide critical services to the higher population, like schools and hospitals. And I understand that those discussions will be forthcoming. However, the second zoning is changed in these neighborhoods, developers will immediately start making these buildings true, and it will go into effect. Before, many of these conversations, I think, are even going to be addressed with the city, with the public. I think maybe the most worrisome thing to me is that the average resident doesn't appear to be aware of these proposed changes, despite the huge impact this will have to homeowners. I've spoken with 300 of my neighbors and residents in the last month, and have yet to come across anyone who is aware of this plan or in agreement with it.
Excuse me. Your time's up.
Thank you very much.
All right. I have Scott Brady next.
Hi. I'm Scott Brady. I'm a resident of Fennhill. And I wanted to say, start off, Mayor Curtis, thank you for one year-plus of clean air. Fifty-plus of us protested the Michaels and Goodwill site changes a couple of months back. We filled this room. We were summarily ignored in the subsequent discussion about the planning commission. I feel they shouldn't have ignored us, and you probably shouldn't ignore us either. When we look around at density, and with the goal of lowering rents and making Kirkland a more affordable place to live, we can look to Totem Lake and see that it is a failed experiment in that. Thousands of units have been built. Prices start above $2,000 per unit. They have consistently maintained that, even though we are starting to see a contraction in the economy and a closing up of rents throughout the country. It's a very interesting time for us here. There are some conflicts of interest on the planning committee as well. You have some folks that are running organizations that are biased and actively campaign for their own ideals throughout the community, instead of considering the best interests of the community at large. Unfortunately, I don't feel that they're also looking at a bigger-picture problem that we're going to have in Kirkland and throughout Washington State, possibly throughout the country in years to come. Currently, our economy in Western Washington relies heavily on tech jobs. I'm a tech worker. Many of us are in this room, I would imagine. As a result of that, many of us will be replaced by AI by the year 2030. Current projections, and these are largely coming from focus groups and places throughout the country that do this for a living, are saying that 30% or more of the high-tech jobs that are available today will be gone by 2030, replaced by AI automation. That's a stark number when you consider that, you know, roughly a third of your populace, which is living in a 10-minute city, may be out of work. Sure, rents will come down, but then where will they go? As we move forward with a planning commission recommendation to start eradicating all of our light industrial, we also move forward with the destruction of places that have traditionally been the support and maintenance facilities for our community for the last 40 years, 50 years. More importantly, as we move forward in time, we will see those necessary spaces be lost, and incubators, which were in these spaces, disappear forever. You can't have people with a tiny exposed courtyard where it rains nine months out of the year getting together to try and build the next creation of jobs, a creator of jobs, and next innovative businesses that allow that one-third of unemployed people to work. If we don't maintain some of those spaces, we lose it all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kenneth Lynn. Hi there. Thanks for letting me speak. I'm Kenneth Lynn. I live at 934 20th Place West. And I'm here to speak also against the city's plan for densification. I know the council is focused on increasing density as much as possible, as quickly as possible. But I believe the city's growth plan is reckless. I've lived on the east side since the 1970s, when my parents moved here from Taiwan, so I've seen firsthand the growth and change in Bellevue, Redmond, and Kirkland. I'm not foolish enough to suggest that there should be no growth or no change. However, each city is unique and has its own unique character. And Kirkland's unique character and community are worth preserving. It's why we chose to live in Kirkland. And it's Kirkland's unique character and community that will be destroyed if the proposed unchecked explosive growth is allowed to happen. Not all cities should aspire to be Redmond or Seattle. The city's plans and meetings are full of buzzwords, buzzwords that imply virtue, words like affordable housing, equity, walkable cities, lofty and worthy goals, to be sure. It's implied that anyone against such high ideals must be evil, or at least something very close to evil. But these pretty buzzwords belie the reality. The reality is that the building of a seven-story waterfront luxury apartment on some of the most expensive real estate in Kirkland doesn't create affordable housing for a single person. It does make some lucky developer a lot of money. Allowing developers to build five-story buildings in every single lot in the Market and Houghton neighborhoods creates density for sure, but it doesn't create affordable housing, nor would it magically bring light rail and transit to Kirkland. It will create density for the profit of the It will create density for the profit of the few at the cost of everyone else and destroy the very character of Kirkland that made us all want to live here in the first place. Thanks.
Thank you. Folks, we have had three people speak against increased density, so according to our items for, this is not a public hearing, so according to our Items for the Audience rules, I cannot longer take any speakers against increased density. I have two more speakers signed up, Lynn Putts. Thank you. And McLaughlin? Same thing? All right, thank you. And feel free to send City Council an email. Okay. Then I have Jennifer Loy next.
The last time I came to speak with you, the Parks Department leadership's bluff was called, and the plot has taken a new direction. I realized that in my effort to get the Park, Caroline Woods Park, permanently back on the right track, I had been misinformed, withheld information, and diverted through a labyrinth of falsehoods that led me to you under a very different objective at the recommendation of the Parks Director, re categorizing the park. A common mixer at city functions is pick which, you know, favorite City of Kirkland Park, you know, what's your favorite? And I'm wondering if you can kind of think of what your favorite City of Kirkland Park is. How long would it take you to realize that the vegetation was no longer being maintained? It might take a while. At what point would it become alarming to you? We hear stories like this in both for-profit and nonprofit organizations alike. An employee who is entrusted to manage public resources misappropriates public assets or resources intended for something else. The resources intended to maintain this neighborhood park got diverted somewhere else along the way without informing the public or the council. We still don't know the root cause of how this neighborhood park was denied public resources and a maintenance level that it used to get where it was serviced like the other neighborhood parks. We know that the behavior of the natural areas maintenance team at Caroline Woods is both responsible for the derelict state it was in in November of 2022 and in violation of the PROS Plan and related scoring that we all trust will be adhered to always, not only when convenient. It's a PROS Plan, not a PROS suggestion. Why did the Parks Department go to such lengths to continue to deny the park the same service other playgrounds get in the face of such clear and documented facts and data? Such a benign topic. My sense is that the department leadership is confident that you won't hold them to account. This is now a case where the cover-up is worse than the proverbial crime. Is it okay to cavalierly cut corners and misdirect the public even if you don't decide to do anything? I am now here to tell you about this experience. If the Parks Department will easily gaslight and lie to me, then they are likely to be able to do the same thing to you as well. Thank you.
All right. Barbara Ross.
I am here to talk about the Public Park, okay? And not Park, Parkway, I guess is what you call it, or the walkway between, if you're going to put it in the PSE right of way. I would strongly object to that. I simply think that it's a danger because of, there's a lot of heavy-duty electricity out there, and I walked it last night in the back because I have access to it. I live right there on 109th, and I could have easily gotten under the wall into all that equipment. And it's just simply, it's a wide gap, and it could, anybody who wanted to. We've had people, homeless people, living back there before, and we got the police to come take those out. It's just a serious health concern, I think, for, if you make it a walkway, the children, high school kids maybe, but also other people use it, and women with babies and strollers and everything. It's a very grave concern for me. And if you put it out on the street, that would be, if you put some speed bumps down to slow the traffic, I think that would probably be more effective than putting it in there, in the PSE grounds. But also, we're talking high school kids. They're supposed to be young adults coming into, graduating from high school and moving on to being adults, and to me, if they're going to be responsible and not be responsible for walking down the street and taking care and watching traffic and everything like that, then what kind of kids are we raising out of the high school? My children grew up on that road. They walked up and down that road every day to high school and had to go down to catch a bus when they were in elementary school, and neither of them had any problems walking on that street, just the way it is. As a matter of fact, at one point, it was worse because they had parking on both sides of the road, and that was very dangerous because the kids were forced out into the traffic areas. But that was taken away, thank goodness. But I just think that the walkway in the back is a big mistake. I'm not even sure how PSE would agree to it, anyway. But that's it.
Thank you. And again, I'm going to refer you to our study session, and I think if David has a second, he can direct you to, we did do a study on it, and you might be interested in reading it.
I would like to read that. Yes.
Thank you. Liz Hunt.
Hello, Mayor Curtis, Councilmembers and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm going to speak about the Neighborhood Safety Program, the NSP, which you'll be discussing later this evening. I support the Neighborhood Safety Program. I support studying how we can improve the program and increase the budget. The NSP is a great way to get neighborhoods engaged. Transportation affects everybody, all kinds of transportation, and it's a topic that a lot of people care about. The NSP leverages the local intel to identify high-impact projects, and people who are in the neighborhood all day, every day are deeply aware of what's working and what's not working with the streets, the sidewalks, the crosswalks, and so forth. The result of this program is a collection of small projects each year that absolutely benefit the city by addressing key transportation needs, and improving the program would amplify that benefit. Diversity is a key issue, and yes, let's leverage the city's DEIB expertise to engage diverse populations in the neighborhoods. Diversity has been raised multiple times at the Kirkland Alliance of Neighborhoods meetings, the CAN meetings, and neighborhoods are very open to engaging with all community members in the neighborhood, all ages, all ethnicities, owners, renters, workers, business owners, I mean, everyone. So let's engage diverse groups in our neighborhoods on transportation issues, and then that broadens to engagement in the community as a whole. We've seen this over the years, that this NSP program becomes a jumping-off point for people getting more involved in stuff that's happening in the neighborhood and in the city. The legislative memo that you'll be discussing later has a suggestion to gather Democrat, complete demographic data about the city to identify underrepresented areas and underrepresented locations for NSP projects. There's a couple of comments I want to make on that. One is that this program is small. We have small projects like a crosswalk or a short segment of sidewalk. There aren't that many of them. Over the last four years, there's been an average of three projects per year, so it's not a huge project. But that the projects are often located based on volume of usage, so high-usage street crossings and things, vulnerable populations like around schools and senior facilities and parks, and documented accident history, like the fatality at the Marina Park crosswalk at Central Way. So there are, the criteria for these projects are for safety and for serving all people in the neighborhood and also who pass through. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Alex Zimmerman.
Zihai, my dirty damn Nazi fascist hunter, I have very good news for you. Games is over. We will make America great again. My name, Alex Zimmerman. I once speak about something what is absolutely critical. Come back to common sense, what does America have for 250 years, minus 40 years, what does you control us? I give you classic example, you know what it means, what does everybody know? How many restrictions you have? Why you have restriction? Is this a children from fifth grade, so you have so many restriction? Why you doing this? This exactly what is I speak for last 20 years, more than 4,000 times. You are pure fascist government, controlling everybody. Democrat mafia control everybody. One, keep power. Power is always money, a good money. It's not a point. So my question right now to everybody who listen to me, you know what it means, is time right now, bring America back to common sense, to everything what is we have before this 40 years, what is controlling in state Washington. And you need be shame, you know what it means? Seven council have absolutely same opinion? How is this possible? How is this possible when seven people have same opinion? Who are you? A robot? A Democrat? Or mentally sick people? Question very fundamental. Is this exactly what is I ask you? We need come back to America, what is we have for 250 years? And first, what is you need doing? Stopping your restriction for these children, you know what it means? You treat them like babies from fifth grade. I repeat this again, stop and doing this. This looks so sick, you know what it means? Start something doing. We need doing this time come. I don't want what is America collapse like Soviet Union 30 years ago, you understand? Like old empire for last 5,000 years. We need doing something. I spent for this country all my life for fighting for American Constitution, freedom, and happiness, what is American government post to be give to everybody? Guys, it's time coming. Start something doing better. Forgot about this 40 years of fascism, democratic control. Stand up, America. Thank you very much.
For continuing, I'm going to offer a comment on the behalf of council. Occasionally, we hear statements that are offensive to our community. The City Council does not necessarily condone these comments. We are committed to making Kirkland a safe and inclusive, welcoming space for all. At the same time, Items from the Audience provides an opportunity for the community members to express their views to council regardless of content. That concludes our Items from the Audience. I sincerely thank all of you. I missed you, Kyle. You weren't on my list. Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. Yes, I was tardy this evening. Good evening, councilmembers. First, I'd like to share that I was just on the new East Rail Bridge over northeast Eighth Street in Bellevue today for the first time. Bridge is great and has a very thoughtful display about the Japanese-American and farming history of the area. I hope you all have a chance to visit sometime soon if you haven't already. I rode my bike from home along the CKC and over the bridge to go to REI, and, you know, there's also a Trader Joe's, a Target, Best Buy, Wajamaya, lots of things there. And it's a reminder that with every passing year, the CKC and East Rail become more and more of a transportation asset in addition to being an excellent recreational asset. My hope is that council retains the spirit of innovation surrounding the CKC when considering the comprehensive plan update and the implementation work that will follow. Changing how we use this strip of land has caused enormous positive change. What if we reimagined how we use space on our streets and in our neighborhoods? Transportation affects land use, and land use in turn affects housing. We need to give space for more transit, more walking, rolling, and biking. Travel lanes and parking lots spread everything out, making cars the best option and is self-reinforcing cycle. Then we need to build parking spaces for our housing, and that's hugely expensive, up to $100,000 per space in a parking garage. Lots of new development that's going in. It's true, it's not the most affordable, but I think how we're requiring it to be built is causing that rather than the development itself. We need to build more densely to make progress on housing affordability, and tying everything to cars and minimum parking holds us back. I understand the concerns about redevelopment, but honestly, land in Kirkland is so desirable that it's going to be redeveloped over time even without any action by the city. The question is if we want older homes to be replaced by huge multimillion-dollar houses out of reach for almost everyone in my generation or about anyone else, or something that can house more people more modestly. I know what I would rather see. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I miss anyone else? All right, we are concluding Items for the Audience. I would just like to thank everybody for making the effort to come speak to us tonight. I appreciate it. We are now moving on to our next agenda item, which is Biennial Community Survey Final Report. City Manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is a follow-up to the May financial retreat. We're going to have a presentation from Devin Bales, excuse me, who is the Director of Research for DHM Research, and he made a presentation on the representative sample survey. He's now going to talk about also the survey, that was the community survey that was self-selected as well as answer some of the questions that were raised by the council at the May financial retreat. So welcome, Devin.
Thank you, City Manager Triplett. Mayor Curtis, council, residents, thanks for letting me join the meeting this evening. I live just over in West Seattle, so not too far, but I appreciate you all having me tonight. David, thank you for the nice, sorry, Manager Triplett, thank you for the nice introduction. As you said, my name is Devin Bales. I'm the Director of Research at DHM Research. DHM is a small public opinion and policy research firm. We have offices in Portland and Seattle, and we're lucky enough to work with the city on this year's Biennial Community Survey. Start my timer here to make sure I keep on time here. So just a little bit of an overview of the research itself and our methodology. This year, we took a two-pronged research approach. So I'm going to talk about two surveys. Both of the surveys were the same questions. One of them I'm going to talk about as the statistically valid hybrid phone and online survey, and then I'm also going to talk about a community engagement survey that the city made available to any Kirkland community members. So you can see up on the screen, the statistically valid survey had 1,000 Kirkland residents participate. That was a representative sample of the population in Kirkland. And then for the community engagement survey, we had 362 people opt-in to participate in that survey. We wanted to make sure we weren't what we call in-the-field conducting those two surveys at the same time, so you can see here, the statistically valid survey, we fielded from May 1st to May 13th. So if you received outreach via phone or text or email during that time and you participated, thank you so much. And as I said, we aimed, we set quotas for age, gender, race, income, to ensure we had a representative sample of the Kirkland population for those 1,000 folks who participated in the survey. For a sample size of 1,000, that margin of error is about 3%. The community engagement survey was then offered from May 15th to June 2nd. Again, it was the same survey instrument, 362 participants, about a 5.3% margin of error for that survey. So I'm going to start by talking primarily about the community engagement survey. Council, I know you've already seen the results of the statistically valid survey. I will go to that at the end, and much of the data that we're going to display here for the community engagement survey is put up right next to data from the statistically valid survey because I think that that comparison is really useful to illustrate the difference. I will also say, just before we dive in, doing a community engagement approach in addition to a statistically valid survey is a really useful tool for many reasons, but one, because it allows anyone from the community who wants to feel heard and wants to make sure that they were able to give their input the opportunity. And what it also does is it allows you to compare the baseline of the statistically valid survey, what we consider maybe what more the averages across Kirkland, with folks that maybe are the loudest or the folks that would like to opt-in and participate. valid survey, what we consider maybe what more the averages across Kirkland with folks that maybe are the loudest or the folks that would like to opt in and participate. So it offers a really nice comparison point. So I think the thing that's important to start with when we think about the community engagement versus the statistically valid survey is that the folks we talked to demographically look different. So I think the four big things we pulled out here is that on average, the community engagement respondents were older and had higher incomes. That's pretty common across survey research. It's part of why we set quotas and such. We know that folks who are older, folks that have higher incomes tend to participate in survey research at a higher rate. And that was true in this process as well. Across the board, and we'll explore the few areas where that's different, there were lower levels of satisfaction with city services in that community engagement sample compared to the statistically valid sample. Crime and public safety were much higher concerns for that separate sample. Those were also concerns in the statistically valid group, and we'll look at some comparisons. And then lastly, growth and overdevelopment are the most significant concern in both the statistically valid research and with the community engagement group. We did see though, for the community engagement folks, you can see there 33%. So a third of folks in that community engagement group said that was the top issue compared to only 20%, one in five of folks in the statistically valid group. So again, just a high level comparison, I won't dwell too long here, but throughout the survey, you'll see sort of that green teal color to reflect the statistically valid group and then the purple colors to reflect the community engagement sample. So I won't dwell on these for too long, but these are some high level demographic differences of those two samples. And then I also wanted to look at the differences in neighborhood. So who was included? So right there in the middle, that's the city estimate that was provided to me for the different neighborhood breakdowns of where the population is. You can see there on my left, the statistically valid survey, and then on the right, the community engagement survey. So I would say in the statistically valid, the only area I would call out for us where we, we're not as close as I would have preferred is Moss Bay. Luckily, in the community engagement sample, Moss Bay was a little bit overrepresented. So we were sure to get responses from those folks. Okay, so I'm going to dive into the data here. Again, purple, community engagement, teal, statistically valid. And what we can see here is, and I want to lead with this, I'll talk about it at the end. Overall, when we asked folks about their level of satisfaction living in Kirkland, people like living here. That's not true across the board for every type of person or every demographic group, and I'll dive in on some of those. But the thing I would point out here is for both groups, the folks who rate their experience living in Kirkland pretty high, you can see that it's a little lower among the community engagement survey group. And I'll just pause and I'll say here, when I look for groups, demographic groups that have kind of lower satisfaction here, folks who make under $50,000 a year, still relatively high, but only 71% say it's excellent or very good compared to 84% for the full sample. And then again, folks who have lived here for 10 years or longer, so some of those more long-term residents, only 80% of those folks say that their experience is excellent or very good, which is below the average. We also asked folks, what was their favorite part about living in Kirkland? Again, on the left, statistically valid, the right, community engagement sample. I think at the top for both groups, the community in Kirkland, the access to parks and nature, walkability, safety, low crime rate, both popped for both groups. We also asked folks, when you think about the way things are going in Kirkland, you know, what if anything concerns you? And so this is where I will highlight that for both the statistically valid, on the left, they're in orange, and on the right, the green, which is the community engagement. Growth and overdevelopment was the top issue for both groups. As you can see, not as extreme, only 20% for the statistically valid folks. For the folks in the community engagement, that's about a third of folks said that. Yeah, go ahead.
Councilmember Tim Chisholm.
Green is happy or not?
No, sorry, we just, so we, these are all negative comments. This is like your thing that you're most concerned about for both groups.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, Devin.
Okay, just making sure, take a pause. So, okay, so here we asked a series of questions to see how folks are rating the city regarding various service delivery categories. And so again, the, both the statistically valid is on the left, the community engagement folks are on the right. You can see sort of across the board there that the city is rated excellent or good in the general population, more so in all categories than it is for the community engagement folks. I will say here, folks aged 45 plus, and when we pulled this out for seniors in Kirkland, which is age 50 plus, were much less likely to say that the city did an excellent or good job overall. So that's that top bar there, overperformance. You can see that in the statistically valid survey, 70% of folks rated the city excellent or good. For folks 50 plus, that number was only 61%. And for folks that have lived here for more than 10 years, that number was 66% versus 75% for the rest for non-seniors in the survey. So again, that's a theme kind of throughout. Folks with the lowest incomes and folks that have lived here for a really long time and folks that are seniors tended to rate things a little bit lower. And I think kind of putting those things together, because the sample in the community engagement group was leaned towards those groups, you can see that reflected across the categories here. So I know this one's a little bit hard to read for, from this distance, but these are the various service items that the city provides. And so we asked both groups, both how important are these to you? And how would you rate the city's performance on a scale of A to F for these things? And so this is for the community engagement sample only. And this is looking at how important they rated things. So we have the column for what the statistically valid group rated them. We have the column for the community engagement. And then over on the right, you can see the difference between those two groups. And so I think for this audience, what I wanted to highlight is that difference. And red means that the score of importance was lower in the community engagement group, and the green numbers are higher there. And I know those are a little bit hard to see. I think the takeaway here is that generally, importance was lower across the board in the community engagement group outside of a few categories, fire and EMS, city parks, police. But for the most part, importance was lower in that group. And then when we asked about satisfaction, it was lower in the community engagement group across the board. And so again, just to kind of hammer home what we saw in those previous slides, the community engagement sample indicated a lower level of satisfaction, but still relatively high compared to other communities in the Washington state that we work with. We asked folks if they were satisfied with the infrastructure in their neighborhood. So again, sort of the same story here, although, you know, compared to that 80% of the statistically valid survey, so that's four of five folks across Kirkland broadly that say they're satisfied with infrastructure in their neighborhood. Only 64% of folks in the community engagement sample said that they were satisfied. So again, a majority, but still a slightly lower level of satisfaction there. Looking specifically back at the demographics for the statistically valid group, the one that popped again here is folks with incomes under $50,000. Only 70% of those folks said they were satisfied with infrastructure in the neighborhoods where they live. We were also thinking about, you know, how, how information gets communicated to folks in the city of Kirkland. And so this is data here. I'll show this for the statistically valid group as well. But for the community engagement sample, 50% of the folks who participated in the community engagement survey were subscribers to This Week in Portland, excuse me, This Week in Kirkland, geez. You would be less happy if you subscribed to This Week in Portland, I can guarantee it. I think that is likely due to, you know, the ask to participate in the survey going out here, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't think too much about this. I think the interesting bit of information on this slide, especially for the council based on our last conversation, is that box on the right is for folks who are not subscribed. We asked them, you know, where are you getting your information about the city of Kirkland? And you can see even more than in our statistically valid sample, social media and online website combined for almost three-fourths of where folks are getting information. And then I wouldn't discount either, an additional 23% who are getting that from word of mouth. And depending on whose, you know, word of mouth they're getting it from, that original source might also be getting it from, from online or social media. I'll come back to that when we talk about the, when I go back to the statistically valid data. So I think my final analysis on the community engagement folks, and again, this is true in most communities where we do a statistically valid and a community engagement survey, that the community engagement sample often represents the loudest community members, the folks who you all, and I say loudest to mean just the folks that are most often coming to leadership, voicing their opinions, voicing their concerns. And so there's a lot of words up here to say, I think what I've already said, that it's not uncommon for satisfaction, if that's something we're asked about, to be slightly lower for a community engagement sample. Another takeaway is that growth clearly is a stressor for folks, particularly for those who are most engaged. So I think some people call out growth and development specifically. You know, we, we see comments in the category of traffic come up. So really kind of all of those things that are associated with growth, I think, are particularly important to folks that participated in this community engagement survey. And then I would say the last thing here, feeling unheard and concern for funds are common themes. The reason I call that out specifically is one of the things we asked is, you know, how do you feel about, the city of Kirkland does managing the public's money? The number of folks who were satisfied there in the community engagement sample was almost half of the statistically valid one. That was where sort of the biggest gap was. And so I think, you know, creating opportunities for people to feel heard, which I think this survey did, and then managing funds is kind of that other big, big takeaway we had. Any questions before I jump to the statistically valid stuff? I know we've, the council's already heard a lot of the outcomes here, so I just want to pause on that community engagement piece.
Looks like we're okay.
Okay. So going back to the statistically valid data, this hasn't changed at all since last time I spoke with the council. We did change some of the visualizations and corrected some of the verbiage based on the feedback you all gave. So this is the same, same stuff I've already showed you last time and that I put up in those comparisons earlier. We were aiming to get as close as we could to a representative group of Kirkland residents. Just a little bit more information here on the breakdown. I did include there in the bottom that homeowners renters. We didn't set a quota, we didn't have a target for that group. I know we talked about that before. I do have a slide here kind of dedicated to renters, just as sort of a priority audience group, and so I'll cover that for a bit towards the end. Okay, so some of the trends we talked about, I think this kind of aligns that overall outcome of generally folks like living here. So when we look at the overall performance for the last decade, and you can see this across categories outside of managing the public's money, there was a little bit of what could be considered a blip or a slight decrease in 2022. One of our big goals in this 2024 version of the survey was to as closely mimic the approach from 2022 as we could. And I think we got pretty close there. And so I would say that those increases in those excellent, good responses, I don't see a methodological reason to see those bump up. And I think when we look at the trends from 2014 to 2024, it really does look like kind of a return to what the normal trend was or has been over the last decade across these kind of high level performance categories.
I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor.
Well, just on that, I went and looked at our agendas during what was happening in 2022 and would note a couple of things. We were in the, right in the middle of stationary plan work. We were updating the tree code. And we had just kicked off the work on permanent supportive housing in La Quinta. So I don't know if that, that, that was some of the context that was during the 2022 survey.
And it's helpful, it's helpful, it's helpful to have that local context. I think even again in survey research, this is, was, 2022 was my first big year focusing on Washington. And I would say just over the course of the last two years, both statewide, and I know in the, the previous presentation, I had a slide about this, people were grumpy in 2022. I think people were thinking like COVID should be over and I should be able to kind of be back to normal, but a lot of folks weren't feeling that yet. And so we saw sort of these low satisfaction numbers statewide and in individual communities across the state in 2022. So it's nice to have some of that, that local context, and I think that's likely some of what's going on in those 2022 numbers. Again, that same number I already showed, like how are you feeling about infrastructure in your neighborhood? Again, within the margin of error, sort of the same story here across the board, consistent with previous years of research, four out of five folks saying they're satisfied. A few more trends. These are the, we asked folks how safe they feel, both during the day and at night. So you can see across the board there during the day, that total safe line at the top is very high. So I have a few demographic differences that we went to and we noticed for the at-night numbers, which you can see do drop. Folks who are age 65 plus, only 68% of those folks feel safe walking outside at night. For women, the number is 75% compared to 84% among men. And then again, for those folks that had household incomes under $50,000, the answer to that question was only 65%. I would say in that low income group and the folks over age 65, there certainly is some overlap between those two groups, and that might be some of that explanatory power there. And then one interesting pattern, I don't, I don't think it is something to over-focus on, but I found it interesting is that households with kids said that they felt safer and households with seniors living in them said they felt less safe. It was like a 10 percentage point difference. I imagine that is largely dictated by the communities in which those folks live, maybe just different parts of Kirkland. But I just thought I would call that out because I thought it was an interesting difference. Okay. Quick look at city services. I'm not going to go full in depth on the Kirkland quad here, but I will put it up shortly. So kind of the same story when we were asking about satisfaction. You can see overall, the average level of satisfaction increased from 2022 to 2024, and the 2024 data is kind of on trend with what we saw for the previous decade. This is a big graph, I will say for the council. I adjusted the axes, so this should be perfectly comparable to the previous research that you guys had conducted. So we're looking at the medians. I didn't set a satisfaction and an importance threshold artificially. I kind of let the data guide that as was suggested, and so it should be comparable. It looks like that's what was done in the past. I'm not going to dwell on any of these too, too long because there's a lot of information up here. But again, for those that read the report, sort of the high importance in places where the city is succeeding in, in terms of delivering those services, folks are giving those a high rating up in that upper right corner. And then the inverse is true, bottom left is lower importance, lower satisfaction. A way that I think is more helpful to look at that same data is to look at satisfaction as a percentage of importance. And so I am not going to go through every one of these, but if you look there at the bottom in the orange, there's four categories that we identified where the satisfaction is significantly below the level of importance folks signed. And I think, you know, if you've been in the room generally tonight and read through this data at all, the ones that are there are not surprising. Responding to homelessness, city planning, responses to growth, attainable housing options for folks in all of all income levels and managing traffic. There were a couple interesting demographic pieces of information. Many of these differed a lot by age. So looking at homelessness as an example, the average rating for folks in the 18 to 29 age group was 2.4, which isn't particularly helpful here, but just in comparison. 30 to 44 age group, 2.6, so higher for that group. And then for folks 45 plus, the average was two, flat. So significantly lower for folks 45 plus, seniors in the city of Kirkland, how they, how high they rated their satisfaction with how the city of Kirkland is dealing with homelessness. An outcome I thought was strange here is that across time, like how long someone has lived in Kirkland was an indicator across many satisfaction levels. It was not statistically different across any length of time living in Kirkland, responses to homelessness. I will not focus on all four of these. I thought the one last one I wanted to call out is the attainable housing options. I thought this was also interesting. The youngest age group, who was most likely to say that that was an issue, actually rated the city the highest, an average of 2.6 compared to 2.1, 1.9 and 1.7 among other groups. I think my analysis there is that maybe those folks aren't attributing the, the issues with housing costs to the city. I don't think they I don't think they think that, they identified it as a top issue, but they're not rating it highly as something the city should do something about. Across those bottom four, I think just in, for time, I won't go through each one of them, but we saw that trend of younger folks giving the city higher scores, even on some of the issues that they rated higher in terms of importance and that they said that they're most worried about moving forward. But across the board, the scores were higher for that 18 to 29 age group and often the 30 to 44 age group as well. And then we would see sort of drop-offs in levels of satisfaction for 45 and higher. Okay, almost at the end here, back to that city of Kirkland subscriber data, this is the same data I showed before. For folks that are not subscribed, about half of them say that they're getting their information from social media or online, another 19% say word of mouth. We also looked at this as a variable for, for satisfaction sort of across the board, and it isn't true for every single service category, but for many, many service categories, folks that said that they were more well-informed were much more likely to rate the city positively. And when I look specifically at subscribers versus non-subscribers, across the board, folks who were subscribed were more likely to give the city a higher rating, with one exception, and that would be attracting businesses to Kirkland. Folks who were not subscribed gave the city a higher rating. So I don't know, that was just one that popped out to me, that was kind of the only outlier there, and I thought that was interesting. And then just to kind of hammer home where folks are getting their information and whether, you know, the city has control of that or not, I know we talked about, like, this isn't necessarily the city's social media accounts, but they are online. There's just huge differences by age groups again. Social media for the 18 to 29 is 44%, it's near 25% for folks between 30 and 60, 64, and then only 9% of folks age 65-plus are online. TV is not, is below 1% for every age group besides folks age 65-plus. So I'd just say where folks are getting their information is diverse across the board, but age is kind of like the biggest segmenter we see for where folks are getting their information.
Before you move on, Councilmember Black has a question.
Yes.
I thought.
Oh, no, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just, wanted to be on the list for when Devin finishes his presentation.
I'm almost done, so we'll be there really soon.
Okay, thank you.
I won't spend time, there's a lot of words on these slides, I feel like these will be helpful for you all to be able to digest on, but I just wanted to say we had some extra analysis put in for, for seniors, we had about 400 of those folks in the statistically valid sample. Just the one thing I'll point out here is that they're more likely to be homeowners, but also more likely disproportionately represented in that $25,000 to $50,000 income group. So they're not a majority in that group or anything, but they are overrepresented there, so there are some folks with, with fixed incomes in that age group. And overall, they just are less satisfied sort of across the board. People of color in Kirkland, we didn't see very many statistical differences. I think it's important to really engage with individual communities, different communities of color are unique, have different needs, have different perspectives, but when we kind of look at it at a high level, there, there wasn't a lot that popped out here. For renters, again, renters were actually fairly satisfied with what the city was doing. I will point out though that, you know, non-homeowners were almost twice as likely to rate the general cost of living as their top concern, and they were much more likely to call out the cost of housing. So again, maybe they're not attributing that to the city, but it's certainly on the top of their minds and one of the most important issues, if not the most important issue to them. And then lastly, those, those non-subscribers for This Week in Kirkland, I think the one thing I would call out here is the, the subscription levels are the same across the city, which I found really interesting. We kind of looked at three different chunks of neighborhoods and they were the same across there. There's more details on those, but in the interest of time, I'll go to the final key takeaways, which is what I led the council with last time, and I will leave it at the end for you this time. People like living in Kirkland for the most part. I think what we found is that especially for folks with the lowest incomes, it's really tough to live here. We see generally more difficulty, more concerns with cost-related issues, but for the most part, people like living in Kirkland. They're generally happy with city services, they're strong positives, they're consistent with the, with the previous surveys, so it's really nice that you all have that opportunity to benchmark that over time. And then sort of the last big thing here is that, you know, growth, growth is a major stressor for both groups. It's more represented in that community engagement survey, but it's important across the board and was a top issue across, and that is my last point there.
Thank you, well done. That was a great presentation.
Thank you.
It was. And I love that the information is so accessible to people, so thank you for that.
Of course.
We'll start with Councilmember Black.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, Devin and our, our city manager, the city manager's team that worked on this, I got to say a couple of things. One is, this is probably one of my favorite agenda items of the entire year, maybe budget approval is, no. This seriously is actually one of my favorite topics, and Devin, so thank you for the team that worked on it. And Devin, I just thought your presentation at the budget retreat, your presentation here tonight, the materials you put together for us and for the public, I just think it's, it's really helpful. I love this agenda item because I love getting this feedback, and it really helps us understand so much, but one of them is the one you, you've highlighted a couple of times is the statistically significant survey is an opportunity for us to sort of hear from, metaphorically speaking, sort of hear from the people who aren't traditionally in the room.
Yeah, correct.
Talking to us, and I just, I just think that's so helpful. I wanted to share with my colleagues, really just two things that I shared with our city manager earlier today that I, I want us to kind of think about, I want our team at the, in the communications to kind of think about. One of the things, Devin, your research showed is that folks who are subscribers to This Week in Kirkland, they are, they report being better informed, and, you know, they, they report that they're more likely to say that they're well-informed about the city. And I'd really like us to think about strategies for converting as many as possible, those folks who are, who are really prior, primarily getting their information from social media and from word of mouth, as much as we can, I don't have the answer to how we're going to do that, but just thinking about strategies or how we get more people, especially those who are sort of more likely to engage in our community engagement survey, the non-statistical who say they are using social media and word of mouth as their, you know, one of their, at a higher rate than others getting information. How we can get them to our, the key resources that we provide as a city that get information out to folks, including This Week in Kirkland and the super helpful This Week in Kirkland podcast. And then last thing, really close, kind of closely related to that, I don't remember where I saw it in the data, but somewhere in the data, you know, there's, there's sort of a statistic, well, I shouldn't use the term statistically significant to someone like you, Devin, but there was a material difference between the view of public safety and crime in the city of Kirkland between sort of community engagement respondents and the statistically significant survey.
Yeah.
And we provide, the Kirkland Police Department provides a crime dashboard that's available online for all residents. And, you know, there's good news in there and there's bad news, and I'm not going to pretend like everything in our crime dashboard is all good news, but it actually is, if you read our crime dashboard pretty carefully and you look at it over time, the, where the, the bad news is not necessarily what people expect, and the good news is better than what a lot of people expect. And I, and I picked up on that some, in the, in the research. And that's another area where I'd really like for us to strategize as cities, how to get more people to our crime dashboard, so that when they're thinking about public safety issues, when they're thinking about crime, when they're thinking about our law enforcement response, and all of our programs that we have wrapped around our, our police response and our first response, that they're looking at the actual data, because we do such a good job of gathering that data, reporting that data, and presenting it in a way that the public, so that's another thing I've, I've asked our staff to sort of noodle on. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Thank you. This comment's mostly for the city manager, but I do, Councilmember Falcon previously brought up discussing social media policies. I think that's a good idea, and I would like to discuss more as Councilmember Black and Councilmember Falcon have brought up how to drive people that are on social media towards at least, not, not to say that social media is not important or it doesn't have a function, but to drive them to subscribing to our This Week in Kirkland, so that they are at least receiving, at least once a week, receiving accurate information. They can receive unaccurate information the rest of the time.
Councilmember Falcon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Devin, thank you, and a huge thank you to everyone in the community who filled out either of those two surveys, that's really important to us as we go through our prioritization for all the work that we do, budget, policy, et cetera, work plans, so thank you for that. I really do appreciate that. I'm noodling on Councilmember Black's idea about looking to, you know, how we can convert more people to being more informed through channels such as This Week in Kirkland. I mean, I think you're, if I'm understanding your data point correctly, it's that folks who subscribe are more likely to report that they're more informed, and we don't really know what, which direction that cause is, if any, right? And so I think Councilmember Black's assumption seems to be that if you, you know, you may be less informed if you're not subscribed, but then once you subscribe, it helps inform you. But it could in fact be the opposite, that folks who are already more informed are more likely to listen to or read This Week in Kirkland. And so it may be that we need to modify the content or the format or something to be more inclusive and attractive to people who are not those who are already more informed. So I just want to make sure we're, we're being mindful that we don't necessarily attribute that to that, to that direction of causal relationship.
Yeah, it's definitely correlation, not causation, and I apologize if I imply the opposite. And that's, it's definitely a consistent correlation, but we don't know what direction that's going in.
Exactly, yeah, so I think we should look at both, and if we are going to dive into our communications plan and some of, some of those ideas, I think it'd be worthwhile to reach out to some folks and have a little bit of, you know, less formal qualitative input on that to really dig a little bit more into that and to inform future decisions that we make on our communication. But I think perhaps a little bit of both is probably what it is, is my guess, which means our strategy would probably need to be a little bit of both, right? So, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? I am also, we're really focused on this not subscribing to our newsletter and getting your information from social media. And we know that people are going to local websites or local Facebook pages and Next Door, and as we look at how to address this, I just feel like we need to meet people where they're at, and we may need to start monitoring those pages to push people to our Kirkland, This Week in Kirkland, and so that they know the resources to get accurate information. And I'm looking at staff over here, so. But again, really well done, we appreciate, that was very informative, so thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity, we had a really good time working on this and appreciate the positive feedback. And yeah, thanks for letting me come present tonight. Questions over here?
Is it okay, Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I noticed that we really were overperforming on the community events, that was the number one. And I'm wondering if the folks made reference to the council's performance at Community Appreciation Night as part of that.
I have, I have no verbatims to directly reflect that, but I also cannot refute that as the, as the case.
No comments about our singing and dancing. Ken, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move to the consent calendar. Before we have a motion, I want to ask Deputy Mayor Arnold to present the audit of accounts and to highlight the proclamation we have on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had payroll in the amount of $5,760,054, and bills in the amount of $5,313,215.3. On the consent calendar, the mayor on behalf of council proclaims July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month. Parks and Recreation Month is a national designation to celebrate and honor both parks and recreation professionals and the profound health benefits our park and recreation programs have on the community. To celebrate, community members are invited to a variety of free community events, including one on the Fourth of July, hosted by our Parks and Community Services Department. These are detailed in our council packet and on the city website. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
I.
Why don't you animals raise your hands?
You, this is the one time you get to yell out. So I saw Councilmember Tim Chisen raise his hand, so I'm going to give him the motion, and then I heard Councilmember Black, and I'm going to give you the second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Consent calendar is approved 6-0. It's nine, and I need a quick little break because we have two business items and council reports, so let's come back at 9:10. Thank you. Thank you. We are now back from a short break, we are moving to our regular business agenda. The first item is a continued discussion on city council operations. City manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So we are hoping to get final approval on the Phase 1 council operation proposed changes, and we're going to talk a little bit about what Phase 2 might also look like. So I'm here to give you that presentation as our deputy city manager of operations, Julie Underwood.
Julie?
Good evening, council. I've got about five slides to run through, and hopefully from your last discussion, we were hopefully effective in capturing the changes that you would like to see. So let's start with the travel guidelines. Won't need to read this, but I'm certainly interested in seeing if you have any changes to what is proposed here.
Council, any, any comments, any improvements? I got thumbs up. All right, one down.
Under special projects reserves guidelines, recall that this is a policy that would be adopted and as part of the budget policies in the budget book. Any?
Our Deputy Mayor.
Just two comments. First, for the second strike through, I'd just note that the council could request something be looked at as part of the budget process, this just doesn't make it automatic, which I think is totally appropriate. And secondly, sometime offline, Councilmember Black will have to explain to me the, that versus which rules, because I never get them right. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Guarantee you that, Deputy Mayor, you don't want me to explain it to you, because once you know it, you'll never be able to read those two words the same, they'll always sound odd to you when they're misused.
Councilmember Sweetdatsy, you raise your hand.
You saw me go like this.
Okay, anyone else? All right, two down.
This is, I just captured the part of the criteria and process for the council coin in which you modified it. So just want to capture, hopefully we captured that.
Okay, I've got head nods, three down.
Excellent. And then finally, items from the audience.
Councilmember Falcon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you for making this edit, this certainly addresses, I believe this was my concern that I raised at our last meeting, so thank you for that, I think this is great. I do want to note, and we're going to be talking about potential round two or whatever we're calling it, I would like to just note that I think it's a, will be a worthwhile discussion in the future to really look at this policy of three speakers and for and against, what that really means, are we, you know, the underlying assumption that there's only, that there are two sides to an issue, I think, may increase divisiveness in the community, I understand the intent, and I think there may be other ways that we can and should explore and discuss to get at that same intent. So not a conversation for today, but just wanted to mention that since it's relevant to this, that I'd like to add that to our future council policy discussion. Thank you.
Noted, thank you. Everybody okay with this language moving forward? Councilmember Tim Chisen.
I am, I guess. Today brought up an issue about what a topic is or isn't, and I guess that's left to the mayor's discretion, but sometimes when people are talking about upzoning or downzoning, today it wasn't quite, quite clear if that was the same topic, if there, some people were talking about transit corridors and some people were not. And so I guess what a topic is, perhaps an issue for another day, but it was this, this particular meeting, that issue arose.
I was aware of that, and that's why I tried to say back to the audience what my perception of was their topic, and I received no objections, and that's why I left it open.
Fair enough.
Councilmember Black.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So no. Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, no, no, no argument against anything I've heard from Councilmember Falcone or Councilmember Tim Chisen, per se. I do want to say, I appreciate that we've clarified this. At this, and at the same time, you know, during my four-plus years on the council, I've served with Mayor Sweet and Mayor Curtis, and have never felt that, that there was any time when they were actually misusing their authority. I do tend, and Mayor, former Mayor Sweet, Councilmember Sweet, you know, often points out to me that I have a tendency to think in the abstract and consider the corner cases, and she's wondering why I'm spending so much time thinking about things that aren't going to really happen. I'll just say that I'm a lawyer. I spent 26 years. That is my job. My job is to think about the corner cases and the things my clients aren't thinking about that could happen. So, when we had this conversation, the study session, I was definitely sort of focused on that, sort of had my lawyer hat on, brain in, plugged in, and thinking, yeah, I mean, you do have to, we do have to consider, you know, the abstract and the corner cases that, and, you know, and whether a different set of mayors, other than the two that I've served with, you know, would somehow misuse this. I do think there is a check and balance that we've talked about, and we should just mention it again. You know, if we have, if we've elected a presiding officer, a mayor who's, you know, abusing their, their power in any way, we have our, we have our remedies. So, I think a lot, you know, I think we could pick a lot of this apart, and, and, and we've made some good, I think my council colleagues have made some good points. At the same time, I think we do have ways to easily make adjustments. And I think my colleague, Councilmember Sweet, would say, yeah, that's, don't let perfect be the enemy of good. Thank you.
Thank you for saying that for me.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Everybody okay with this language?
Okay. And in Kurt's one-on-ones with many of you, a couple additional improvements surfaced. Updates to the social media policy was called out. City Council regional committee reports tonight examining the three speakers for and against. Are there any other topics you want to include?
I, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, the reason I, I'm, I'm just weighing whether, when I think about our updates to our social media policy, I probably think about that a little more broadly, like our updates to our community. I think it's, I think our social media policy resides within a larger communications, council communications policy. And I do think of it as probably just a little bit broader than just looking at social media. It's, because there are things like, I think if I, last time I read our, our policy, we talk about op-eds in a way that is very 2004. And there are just, there are, there are versions of, there are versions of council, of our, of council colleagues doing quote-unquote op-eds that just really aren't necessarily contemplated well in our overall communications policy. And some of that, and some of that very closely overlaps ultimately with social media, because some of those sort of, you know, 2024 op-ed opportunities are kind of in the social media, or in the, you know, or in the podcast space, or the video podcast space, that I just want to make sure we're looking at it a little bit more broadly, if we could. That's all I wanted to say to my colleagues and staff. Thanks.
That's helpful.
And this is also referring, I believe, to the recent Supreme Court decision regarding really having a official kind of authority to speak on behalf of the city. So, that's one part of it. Certainly, I think there is the other part about op-ed today isn't newspaper op-ed. It is my own social, my own Facebook page, or my own Instagram. Yeah.
Yeah. And the trick, the trick is the one we've talked about before. It's, it's, no one wants to keep any of our, any of our colleagues from expressing their opinion in any number of different media, and in a different number of channels. But at the same time, we do have these policies in place for a reason, so that it's understood when someone's speaking for the city, and when they're speaking for their, individually. And I just think it, it's not, it isn't social, it is on social media, and social media creates particularly unique issues that we've talked about before, like Open Public Meetings Act violations. But there's also, I just think, maybe just sort of updating concepts and ideas, and across our entire communication, just making sure that it reflects 2024 is kind of what I'm thinking in my head.
And maybe I should ask Kurt this, but, and you're looking for the staff to come back with some suggested edits to update the policy, correct?
Yeah, that's what I, yeah.
And then you can react to that. Okay.
Correct. Thank you.
Got it.
Anyone else have comments? All right. Thank you, Julie.
And just to make sure I'm clear for everybody, that the goal is to bring what you just amended back on consent at the next council meeting, and then start a next round for the others. We're not going to wait to finish these as we bring back those others.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we have added 9B. We will move to our additional item, further discussion of city council flag process. Welcome back, David.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Good to see you all again, council.
So, as he's putting it up, so where we left off, we had, may or may not have completed the conversation about the advisory group and the community outreach process, and then we also want to talk a little bit about the resolution itself and the potential criteria. So, those were the sort of unfinished parts of the conversation.
Thank you. Do you want to just dive in? Okay. Councilor Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciated our discussion downstairs, and I'm excited to continue with it. You know, I, I really do think this can and will and should be a really fun thing for everybody, right? So, some of my other comments include, I agree, I think one of the last comments that Mayor Curtis made was around having some sort of prize. I completely agree with that. I think that could be, you know, I think it'd be good to let people know in advance, to try to get them excited. There might be some people that, like, that just incentivizes them to want to get engaged, right? And so, could be, you know, we give away hoodies with the, you know, with the winning design, or I don't know what that might be. And certainly, for the winner, perhaps an actual physical flag, and like was mentioned, the opportunity or invitation to march in the July 4th parade with the flag. I think that would be a pretty cool thing. So, I fully support having some sort of prize for the winning design, and it may be more than one, potentially, as we discussed earlier, that something that we're talking about, is, is the opportunity for kind of merging, at least openness. I know some of us may not agree with that, but we may land on that. I'm not sure. So, maybe more than one quote-unquote winner or winning design, but also just finalists. I think making it to a finalist stage is something that should be honored in some capacity. So, I just want us to think through what would be appropriate for that, and what would be really meaningful and fun for folks. We received an email. Thank you, Mr. Dresner, for your email, with some things that were also on my notes. So, I'm going to share the rest of the other note that I had, is I am concerned about folks repeatedly answering the survey, right? They may have, you know, a friend, a close friend or family member who submitted a design, and they can work around the system. We all know that that's something that can be done. So, I want us to be a little bit more thoughtful about that. In the email that we received, I think that was termed Bodie McBoatface, and that's something that, you know, we certainly see those kinds of, you know, folks that, that answer surveys and can come up with really creative ways to work around the system of kind of one vote per person. So, I want to share, because I do really like what Mr. Dresner outlined, so I wanted to just share that here from the dais as well. The process that he is, and I'm still processing this, but it seems good upon, upon first read, is to have also really early community input, and meaningful community input, not just on yes or no, or which is my favorite design, but what folks are looking for, and having something to respond to. So, seeing designs in the early on phases, as they've been already vetted, obviously, through city staff, to make sure there's nothing offensive, or, you know, things of that nature, but ones that are appropriate designs that were submitted, having the public look at them and giving input, you know, about, I like this design, but maybe the colors really aren't, you know, what I think are most visually appealing, or, I love these symbols. These symbols are really meaningful to me as a community member because of X, right? And that kind of feedback can be really meaningful to the, is it the K flag group that we're talking about? To the K flag group. And I like that process of having early community input, having more qualitative community input. I think there's ways of doing that that wouldn't be overly burdensome, right, to be able to do that, and then narrowing it down. So, I won't go through each of the steps, but that's kind, excuse me, the kind of the higher level input that we received from Mr. Dresner. And I think that really would alleviate some of my concerns about having the repeated voting, which may not be meaningful. You know, one of my colleagues shared with me, too, there's a concern of having folks from outside of Kirkland. There could be, you know, folks in someplace of the country who have a vested interest in one of the designs that has some meaning to them, or they just want to, you know, kind of cause some trouble and weigh in, and we want to avoid that. And I think having a process, like I just described, might help with that. So, I wanted to propose that as a potential change. It's more than a tweak. I was going to say tweak. I think that's more than a tweak. That's a pretty substantial change, to what that engagement process may look like. And I think that may be more engaging for community members, too, to get to really share their thoughts more than just kind of selecting their top three. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Okay. Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to make sure, are we prepared to take, turn the page to the resolution?
I'm not.
Okay, then I will hold my comments.
Okay. So, my additional comment, and I do appreciate, almost, Mr. Dresner's email. What I wanted to add is we have a NAV criteria. Is it that, do I have to say NAV, Nava, or N-A-V-A? What, how?
Say all the words.
I can't. I'm not even...
You can say NAVA.
NAVA, okay. Criteria seven. It's a, and it's in how we represent DEIB. And to me, that's very challenging, and it doesn't give us, it doesn't address the other things that we may want to illustrate, such as sustainability. So, I would change that language. And, you know, how do you represent DEIB?
David, do you want to flip to the next?
Yeah. So, I would change that language, and just say the flag needs to be consistent with our city values. And that way, it simplifies it and makes it more clear.
And also broadens it to the sustainability, other priorities.
Other things that are priorities for us. Thank you, David. You said it better than I did. And then, when Councilmember Falcone was talking about receiving public feedback, I thought, well, that's interesting, because an artist could say, ooh, I like this feedback, and I'm going to modify my design. So, I assume that we're going to let people do multiple submissions.
Yeah, that, that was the intent.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. And iterative, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Then I think we can move on to the resolution. Anybody else have anything? Okay.
Great.
Councilmember Black, did you have something on the resolution?
Yeah, are we talking about the resolution?
Yes, we are.
I will say that you, you told me I couldn't make comments on the resolution, then you made comments on the resolution. I don't know, I don't know what to make of that. But actually, what I will say is, thank you for going first, because I was going to say the same thing about Section 3G. I would just like, I think it makes more sense for that to be sort of consistent with the city values. And the, and the, the artist and creator, you can, you know, they can express what that means to them. Our, the folks who are going to be reviewing these designs for us, staff and the community, can make their own judgment as to whether they think it reflects the, the values of the city. So, I think it's good to broaden that. And so, the only other comment I have on the, on the resolution, I was really, in the recitals, I was really looking for that, that one recital that really captured the idea that this was an opportunity for community building, and it was going to be fun. And I didn't really find that. And I just wonder if the last recital, that's the lines 30 through 33, we've talked a lot about what that process is going to look like, and I think, I wonder if instead of trying to describe this comprehensive community engagement process, I wonder if we could recast that recital just a little bit more, just, I mean, one of the reasons when we talked about this, and Councilmember Sweet moved this item, we talked a lot about how much we wanted this to be a community building process and fun for everyone, and a chance for everybody to engage. I just think maybe we can, I just, I read that recital and thought, this is, that might be a good one to sort of recast in that light of, hey, the reason we're doing this, and the reason we talked about from the dais, was a real focus on community building. So, that was my comment. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, go forth and make magic.
All right. I will return with a card trick. I actually shouldn't have said that on the record. I apologize. I won't.
Okay, we are now, that concludes our business. So, we are now moving to council reports, and I'm going to start with Councilmember Tim Chisen.
I will see you all on the Fourth of July. Looking forward to it. Thank you. That's my report.
Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am looking forward to the Fourth of July. Love riding in the fire truck. So, we'll see everyone out for that. I am going to let Councilmember Sweet talk about the Cascade Water Alliance. And, and I'm going to let Councilmember Sweet say anything further about the Fourth of July.
Thank you.
And I am going to let Mayor Sweet talk about Amazon Project Kuiper, since you spoke at that event.
Mayor Curtis?
Mayor Curtis. What did I say?
Sweet.
Oh, sorry. Mayor Curtis. And I will focus on just sort of reiterating how important I thought the Wednesday, June 26th Racer Principal Assembly, Racer anniversary was, and how it was well-attended by so many people who have had a role in making Racer a reality from all over region, including tons of our council member partners, our legislative partners, community partners. The one person who didn't attend was me. I wasn't able to, but Deputy Mayor Arnold was there to represent the city at the actual anniversary, along with a key, a bunch of members of staff. So, thank you for that. And then, following that, we did do our business meeting, the meeting of the principals' representatives, and I did share that information out. What we talked about was, was, was in line with the agenda and the materials that were provided. I'll just reiterate my invitation to any of my council members. If anyone has any questions about the principals' assembly, certainly let me know. And that's it. That's my report. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
Okay, a couple things. Now that you remind, oops. You reminded me of the Cascade Water Alliance event. We had our 25th anniversary gathering at the Maidenbauer Center. It was really well-attended. There must have been a couple hundred people there. I was joined by Councilmember Falcone, Council, or Deputy Mayor Arnold, and Councilmember Black. So, we were well-represented. It was a very fun event. We had keynote, we, we had a panel, Grant Degenger and who came back from the past?
John Marchioni.
John Marchioni, right. So, talk about the early days in the development. Thanks. Talk about the early days of the development of Cascade, and sort of that whole sense of panic that we had going into the development of the relationship with Cascade and Lake Taps, and then sort of how it has changed over the years. So, it was really a fun panel discussion. And then, we followed that with a guest speaker from Colorado, who taught us what a really squirrely, scary water situation can really look, look like. I think they served 6 million people from the Colorado Basin, and it's, I mean, it's just a massive project, and their, their numbers are amazingly low in terms of what their capacity to cover. They're supposed to be able to have four years of reserve, and they simply don't. So, it's, it's kind of scary. They are working their way through it, and are confident that they'll figure their way through it. But it was fascinating. It was nice to be able to get up after she was done and say, well, things are looking pretty good. Okay, the other thing I wanted to talk about, Mayor Curtis gave me the opportunity to talk about the parade. We are ready. We are set. We are going to be the corner of Market and where we always are.
Waverly.
Waverly. Yes, Market and Waverly. Special event this year. It is the 25th anniversary, so that's why you see these buttons, and you'll see more buttons. We also got the special memorial... We have a lot of extra entertainment and music this year, which is really exciting. And I have to say that for 25 years, I have been trying to get dancing horses. We have dancing horses. Indu got them for me and she worked her little tail off to do it. So I'm, I'm very excited and they're pretty close to us in the parade. The other things that we have, we've got Blue Thunder. We've got, the Rainbow City Band is coming back. Beats of Redmond, an Indian drum band will be there. There's an International Lion Dance, Cascadia Pipe Band. There's a Hanga Dance, which is a Chinese ballet and dance group. We have a group called Chaotic Noise. Neon Brass Band, Northwest Tap Group and the Seattle Derby Brats, which are roller derby people. So that's going to be fun stuff that we're going to inject in. Be sure to tune in, Bee, because you can see it from your balcony. But it's going to be a pretty exciting parade, I think, this year. It's not real long. We've got 76 entries in all. Unfortunately, our Veterans Event is a little slower, quieter this year. I'm co-running that event, so I invite you all to please come down, shake hands with, with our veterans. They really appreciate seeing council before the event. We'll start that reception at 10 o'clock. And I think that's it.
Awesome.
Just plan your outfits.
Your reception at Heritage Hall?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, that's a tough act to follow. I will have to say, just to add on to, thank you, Councilmember Sweet, for summarizing so beautifully the Cascade 25th Anniversary Celebration. She forgot to mention what a beautiful job she did speaking, welcoming everybody and, and speaking at that event. It definitely was a very proud moment for Kirkland. So well done, Councilmember Sweet. You know, I'm one of the 20-something percent of Kirkland residents that do subscribe to This Week in Kirkland and listen to the podcast. And I had heard on the podcast about some of those new entries, the, the dancing horses, the Beats of Redmond, the Seattle Derby Brats. And I'm really excited for all the new acts that are going to be in the parade this year. So that'll be, as well as some of the traditions that we have as well. So that'll be pretty special. Just want to add a few things. Councilmember Black and I attended the ribbon cutting of the Iva Place Kirkland Facility. This is a Friends of Youth Affordable Housing Facility for young folks, 18 to 24, who are in between, I believe, 30 to 50% AMI. There are 15 units. One of them is dedicated for ADA accessibility and they are beautiful units. It really struck me when I first walked in, just, this is a place that I would love to live. They were, you know, really high quality fixtures. There was, you know, laundry in the unit. There was good quality furniture in the living, the living space. It was just really beautiful. So really well done, Friends of Youth and all the partners that were there at that event. I know Arch, and I'm not going to list them all, King County, among others. So really well done. I'm really proud to have that here in Kirkland and more of that, please, as we continue to do our work on affordable housing. Next week, just want to highlight that we are reconvening the SCA Equity and Inclusion Cabinet after about a year or so hiatus. I'm the current vice chair of that. Our agenda includes items such as the PIC operating policies review. So may have a discussion with our mayor in advance of that to make sure I'm prepared for that discussion, as well as the Asylee Statement Review, which the board and PIC have also reviewed and may be continuing to review, as well as other administrative items. We'll likely select a new chair and vice chair since it's been a while since we met. So just wanted to highlight that we'll be doing that. I am also looking forward to something fun coming up. Was invited to be a dog modeling contest judge at Kirkland Uncorked coming up. So that'll be fun. I mean, who doesn't love looking at, you know, cute dogs and getting to, to hang out with them? So thank you for the organizers of Kirkland Uncorked for that invitation. I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Very busy. I have a couple of things to report that we haven't talked about. On Wednesday, June 19th and Thursday, June 20th, I attended the AWC Conference. Always energizing, hearing ideas from around the state, but also made me really proud of our city. One of the keynotes was a speaker name, one of the keynote speakers was an author named Peter Kajagayama. And you may recall him as somebody who led the For the Love of Kirkland Workshop in 2017. He talks about how we should, similar to our discussion today, make cities fun and talks about different ways to do that. There was another session and, and one of the examples he shared from around the state and around the country was from our, our city, the decoration of cow and coyote, depending on different things going on during the year. There was another session about collaborative decision-making, which I believe reflects a lot of the culture we've tried to establish on this council. One of the public commenters talked about us being unanimous in thought because of seven of our votes. Looking at all my colleagues here, we are not unanimous in thought, but we do the work that by the time we get to final action, we do this collaborative decision-making and have something we all can support. I think that's a worthy goal. I will send around some notes, including my notes from a tour of Vancouver's tiny home village and a session on turning vacant retail space into vibrant places. On Friday, June 21st, the State Building Code Council met. Note, a couple of milestones that will be happening there. I believe the deadline will be September 19th for proposals for the next commercial building code, other than what's in the energy code. And then if my notes are correct, it'll be November 19th for the commercial energy code. So as we hear about that, that's the opportunities for those changes for codes that would be adopted in 2025 for implementation in 2026. The residential code is the final year and somehow I got myself appointed as chair of the Residential Technical Advisory Group. Not that I have any technical advisory opinions to offer, but I can run the meetings. And this is interesting because the residential code is one set by the state. And while the commercial code is a city, we could amend that if we wanted to. The residential code cities do not have the opportunity to. And we'll be tackling some things that were discussed by the legislature, like single stairway exit buildings for multifamily and temporary housing standards, which I think are the tiny homes things that we've seen in our tour as well. So excited to work on those issues. On Monday, June 24th, the King County Transportation Board met. This is the first step in the PSRC grant funding process and pleased to report that Kirkland's grant request for $1.3 million for the pickup draw-off at the 85th Street Station at 116th and 87th Street was forwarded for approval in the process, as was the bicycle and pedestrian improvements on Northeast 128th Street between 116th Avenue and Totem Lake Boulevard. That's a grant worth $986,000. This needs to go through the entire PSRC process, but excited that we are starting off with a couple of projects in the list. And then finally, as Councilmember Black mentioned, I attended the Regional Crisis Response Agency one-year anniversary. It was very inspirational as speakers reviewed the history and it's a short history of the last 10 years or so where we started with doing this partial ride-along resource to an agency that's providing 18 hours, seven a day coverage of mental health professionals arriving in their own crisis responder vehicles. So it's something where we have met the moment and are something that's really leading the state, if not the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. And that makes me think we should do a story about the one-year anniversary of Racer. So yeah, it's a good story to tell. So I spent a very early morning last week with the Rotary Club of Kirkland, 7:30 in the morning. So thank you so much for the invitation. Last week, I had a quiet ride-along. It was a very cold and rainy night with KPD. So thank you to Officer Woodruff and Wood for spending time with me. We, all of us on the dais got to attend the Amazon Kuiper, Project Kuiper Satellite Facility ribbon cutting, along with Senator Cantwell and Dr. Amy Morrison for Lake Washington Tech. It was a great event. I'm so excited that Satellite Facility is located in Kirkland and I especially appreciate the partnership between Amazon and Lake Washington Tech for workforce development. That is another great story to tell. I attended the memorial service for Mitsuko Okado, who is a longtime Kirkland resident who received our proclamation of the Day of Remembrance of the Japanese Internment. Deputy Mayor Arnold and I got to meet her in person when we gave the proclamation in her home. She and her family are the most loving, sweet family and it was really an honor to be at her service. If you have not read it, please read the excellent Parks and Community Services Annual Report. There is a lot of good stuff in it. I'm really proud of what we're doing. And the only thing, I'm really looking to the Fourth of July, and you left out the 20-foot mural that everybody gets to color in. So look for that because it's another great opportunity to love on Kirkland. So thank you.
The mural will be located by the food trucks in the Lake and Central parking lot.
Awesome. Everybody hear that? Lake and Central parking lot. Thank you. City Manager?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have one topic and then we're going to get to Legislative Request Memo. So some of you may have seen that in the barrage of Supreme Court issuances over the last two weeks, that there was one related to the Grants Pass v. Johnson case related to homelessness. I just want you to know that we have received that. City Attorney's Office is reviewing it. We'll have a lot more to say about it as we come back with the action plan. I think the short version, this is the Kurt Triplet version, so Darcy's going to squirm as I give you my opinion on the ruling. But what it basically said was that the Eighth Amendment does not prevent a city from enforcing laws against camping. And so I don't think that fundamentally changes what we are looking at because the question has always been, what next? If you say someone needs to go from there, where do they go and how do you do that? Right? So obviously, an important ruling, it creates some definition, but there's a lot to be looked at and there's more that's going to come on that. But so I just want to make sure you all knew, as all this other stuff has been happening, we are tracking that, we are evaluating it and we'll be reporting back to you on that. So it's a big, big difference. And then, almost as importantly, on July 14th at Emerald Downs are the Corgi World Championship Races that benefit the Alzheimer's Association. And my wife has entered Theo in the lottery and he won and he will be in heat 10 at 1:30. So any of you who want to see Corgi races that benefit the Alzheimer's Association, come on down on July 14th to Emerald Downs. All right. I will also say though, that three former finalists have been put in his heat. So also, he has not trained, so I'm not really thinking a lot's going to happen, but we hope he runs straight. So, all right. With that, I'm going to go ahead and go to our Legislative Request Memorandum and then we'll come back with the calendar update. So this LRM, as you know, is, the council had asked us to bring back an LRM on whether or not there should be an evaluation of the legislative, excuse me, of the Neighborhood Safety Program. And so here to walk you through that LRM and seek your action is our DEIB Manager, Erica Musgrove.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council. So as the City Manager stated, I will be walking you through the Legislative Request Memorandum here on after referred to as the LRM for the Neighborhood Safety Program here on after referred to as the NSP. So tonight, staff has this request, council, for council to consider the following options by motion. Number one, take no action, which would close the LRM. Two, approve the evaluation of the Neighborhood Safety Program, including the options provided by staff. And three, approve the evaluation of the NSP subject to addition, deletion or modification. Some background on the LRM. During the 2024 NSP Recommended Project Presentation to Council, which was held on May 21st, 2024, a LRM was requested to evaluate the NSP program. The following slides, I'm not going to read word by word because these were presented to you at that May presentation. For this one, it's just the NSP background, the, the top statement, which we see as the, what City Council authorized the NSP for, which is to re-energize the neighborhoods. The following slide speaks to all the goals. And then this slide refers to the funding background. And I place these slides here in case we want to refer back to them during discussion. The potential evaluation process and timeline, this is really high level. So if council decides that we do want to do the evaluation, then the 2025 NSP, which would begin this fall in 2024, will remain the same. The evaluation would begin on the first quarter of 2025 and any changes to be implemented as, would be part of the 2026 NSP, which would begin on fall of 2025. This, I will go more into detail because these are the potential evaluation options. So the first one is to reinstate the RRFPs. This would be likely to require a significant budget increase as one of these projects can consume most of the current project budget of $350,000. Two, creating a new RRFP-only program in addition to the NSP. Scoring and process could be part of the NSP or something new. Three, increase the program budget to account for inflation, given that the budget has not changed in years and material and labor costs have gone up. Four, enhance DEIB implementation within the program by expanding NSP representatives and including underrepresented, represented locations for projects. And five, the NSP goals were originally meant to re-energize neighborhoods through the partnership on capital project implementation. If council concludes that these goals have been met, the NSP could be retired, directing the funding to related CIP, PIT, bike safety categories, such as the Active Transportation Plan and safer routes to school action plans, which also have significant community engagement And so now we're back to our staff request for council to consider these options by motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Councilmember Falcone, you're fast.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thank you so much, Erica and team, for bringing back this LRM to us. As I believe I share every time we talk about this, but I feel the need to share it just a tiny bit again. You know, the NSP, the Neighborhood Safety Program, was really instrumental to engaging me personally in the community and is part of what led me to run for City Council. It was, I had a wonderful experience. The benefits that I've experienced over the years, not only did it feel empowering to get to, to get to represent my community and help to affect positive change within my community that benefited my, my neighbors and the entire community, but it also is a great opportunity for folks to learn more about other neighborhoods outside their own throughout the city, to engage with other neighbors across the city and build those relationships of other folks who are passionate about, you know, neighborhood after-transportation safety, safety of, you know, those who are just, of our schoolchildren, of our seniors and other vulnerable populations. And it also is a great opportunity to engage with city staff and to really kind of get to know the way local city government works. It's perhaps not as, forgive me, perhaps not as fun and engaging as the Flag Program that we're going to be doing, right? But it still is really fun and engaging, right? It still is another way that's not like a huge, it's not as much of a commitment to, say, applying for a border commission, right, or other things. It's a pretty fairly low barrier to entry, right, to get to know how the city works and to engage with other folks. And it also, at the end of the day, provides us with smaller and much-needed safety improvements throughout the community that in and of themselves may not bubble up to, you know, our CIP work that we do. And so I do fully support continuing the Neighborhood Safety Program. Just want to make that crystal clear. So I do not support, I think the numbers are a little bit different, what you had on screen versus what was in the memo. So I'll update to what was on screen. I think four and five were switched.
I'll scroll back to that. Erica.
Thank you. Thank you. So, I do not support option one, including option one, because option one, RRFBs, I mean, they just have skyrocketed. I remember when I was on the Neighborhood Safety Panel, they were skyrocketing then. And back then, they're a small fraction of the cost of what they are today. It's, I have sticker shock every year where we see the pricing for RRFBs. So, I think that RRFBs are no longer appropriate for the scale of the Neighborhood Safety Panel. So, I do not support one. I do support two. I do support three, and I do support four. And I do not support including further consideration of item five. When appropriate, I'm happy to make a motion, Madam Mayor. But that's the, those are the items that I'll be supporting. I think it really makes sense. It's been a decade now since this was formally adopted by council as a program in our city. There have been a lot of changes. Our city has grown a lot over the last 10 years. I think it's a really, you know, we've had things such as RRFBs been peeled off because they're so expensive. So, I think it's a really appropriate time for us to look at, how can we make this program even better going forward? I particularly really appreciate, in addition to, you know, the more very clear items that I think need attention, such as, you know, perhaps looking at increasing the budget since costs have increased. But I really appreciate the addition, option four, of looking at it through a DEIB lens and how to really be truly inclusive and how, what the best mechanism is. So, I'm really looking forward to that discussion and how we can, we've learned a lot. We continue to learn and grow as a community, as a city government. And I'm really looking forward to how we can improve this program even more moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Falcone. I'm glad I let you go first. I always hesitate to say, I agree with everything my colleague just said, 'cause then I'm like, is there anything they said that I don't fully agree with? But certainly, in your preamble, I agree with everything you said. I think you did a really great job of capturing not just your own sentiments, but really the sentiments of the entire council when we had this discussion in connection with approving the 2024 Neighborhood Safety Program proposals. So, thank you. And so, I'll get, I think I'll get right to it. You know, when I made, when we discussed this topic last time, you know, my focus was on this really good question that's been raised about RRFBs, like, where's the right place for them to sit? And they don't sit very well in the NSP, because they've just, they almost break our program. We just, I really wanna deliver lots of small safety improvements where more than a majority, well, sorry, more than a majority, a majority of our neighborhood associations who are engaging this are able to actually get a project approved. And we just can't do that with RRFBs included in it. So, I don't know, and then my other focus, right from the get-go, was that the, you know, the budget was fixed at $350,000, I think in 2014. It's never increased. So, that remains my focus. So, I do agree with, so, I don't agree with one. My, okay, it's like, am I agreeing with Councilmember Falcone or disagreeing? One would break, would continue to sort of break the program. Two, when I say create a new RFB program, do we need a whole new program in the city of Kirkland? I don't know. Maybe not. Part of our existing CI, capital project improvement, you know, process, but can be part of that. It doesn't, I don't necessarily envision that having to be entirely the program, but that's part of the evaluation that the staff's gonna do. Increasing the program budget, yes. And I think, yeah, anytime that we can sort of focus on making sure that we're hearing from diverse voices throughout Kirkland and throughout all of our neighborhoods is important. So, that's it. Thanks.
Councilmember Black, where are you on number five? I'm counting votes over here.
Oh, yeah, I am not supporting retiring, no.
Thank you. I have Deputy Mayor Arnold, Councilmember Sweet, and then Councilmember Tim Chisholm.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanna note, we've heard some concern via public comment and email on what was in the memo option four, what's on the screen option five, about retiring the program and where this came from. And I just wanna note, the Legislative Request Memo process is really council asking staff for analysis and some scoping of some future work to decide, okay, do we really wanna ask that question? As this process has been used, we've seen staff develop a number of options beyond whatever the original request was. Because the request would be something like, hey, we wanna look at the Neighborhood Safety Program. They provide options. Sometimes they're interesting additions to the LRM, approaches to integrate things within current work that we're already doing. Sometimes they're bookends to represent the range of options. I see the potential evaluation option of retiring the program as a bookend. And so, that's where some folks have considered that a surprise. I think this is just a outcome of the LRM process. In any case, LRM's are council providing direction to staff to bring back options that we will discuss in the future, where there'll be opportunity for public comment and feedback and things like that. That said, I support options two, three, and four on the screen, the separate, our Rapid Flashing Beacon Program, increasing funding, and additional DEIB outreach and implementation.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
I think, I think we have pointed ourselves in a direction. So, I will go all the way back to Councilmember Falcone, well-stead, well-seconded by Councilmember Black. Deputy Mayor Arnold, thank you for that clarification. Absolutely, it's a bookend. The NSP has been a well-received, real neighborhood participatory process for, how many years have we been doing? Yeah, for 10 years. And it's really gotten people excited about having a say in what goes into their neighborhoods. So, I am in agreement with my colleagues. My question would be on item two. Would there be an RFB-only program? Or would it fall into the CIP process? So...
I think that is one of the things we'd wanna evaluate. Probably bring some, several options for the council to consider on the flashing beacon emphasis.
And I am fully in support of three and four.
Thank you. Councilmember Tim Chisholm?
Yeah, number one, I don't think I support. I'm not even sure, it's difficult to read. The, number two, I support. I think it's essential we create an independent program for these flashing beacons. I understand they have skyrocketed in costs, but they are also extremely valuable, and they have provided a tremendous amount of value to Kirkland in some locations and some neighborhoods. So, I would like to not see them abandoned just because of the increased costs that they represent. We do have to reevaluate the budget on this. The Consumer Price Index in 2014 of $350,000 is currently about $470. And so, an appropriate budget of this program would be at least $470, if we don't even wanna increase the budget. That would just be to maintain the Consumer Price Index of $2014. Number four, I'm skeptical of. And number four is enhanced DEIB implementation. If the DEIB is to increase the voices of our neighborhood organizations, then that may be, that may work. But I don't wanna see this become government-driven and driven by our city's government. I want this to remain a program that is driven by our neighborhoods. And number five, no, I don't think I support that one. Thank you.
I have nothing to add, except that it's a worthwhile program and it should continue. Councilmember Falcone, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we authorize staff to evaluate the Neighborhood Safety Program, including options two, three, and four, as displayed on the screen.
Second.
I have a motion.
Question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Tim Chisholm.
I would like more information on number four and how that's gonna work.
And I think that will be part of the evaluation.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if I clarify a little bit, the thought process behind it is not that the city would direct, it would be community representatives that we think are broader than currently we have on the selection process. So, it wouldn't be a city process, it would be a community process, but just, we would bring you options for a broader community making those decisions.
Okay, I'd like more information on number four. Thank you.
As we move through the process.
As we move through the process. I'm not gonna move to amend the motion, though.
Okay, thank you. Anyone, any other discussion? All right, the motion has been made by Councilmember Falcone, by Councilmember Black, to move forward with options two, three, and four. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you very much.
You have a calendar, right?
All right, my final item, then, is, is there any other calendar changes that the council would like to bring to our attention? Okay. We'll see you all on the Fourth of July. You'll probably see most of us on a corner somewhere as you circle around.
We will wave.
We look forward to seeing you.
We will throw, well, we can't. We'll hand you a sticker. All right, we are adjourned. Happy Fourth of July, everyone.